My name is Chuck Iovin, and I'll be presiding over this evening's meeting of the Malden Planning Board, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. First order of business is for those in attendance, under the provision of the open meeting law, attendees are informed that this meeting is being recorded by Urban Media Arts, formerly MATV. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. The next thing we will do is we will do a planning board roll call, starting with Ronnie. Ronnie Rajverma, Planning Board.
Todd Dejgabrisalasi, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Ken Antinucci, Planning Board.
Chuck Iovin, Planning Board.
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Patty Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Stephanie Stone, Planning Board.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda will be Seventy-six Granville Avenue. So if the petitioner is present, they can come up and give their presentation. Diane, if you could read the notice. Oh, hold on. Okay.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, two fifteen Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass, at seven P.M. on Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, on the petition of James Motzkin, trustee of the Saratoga Trust and the Malden Realty Trust, seeking consent under Title twelve, Chapter thirty-two of the Code of the City of Malden, and Section sixteen of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, to file petition seeking a special permit under Title twelve, Chapter twenty-eight, Section zero-one-zero-D-one of the Code of City of Malden, permit application number C.M.I.D. zero-five-nine-seven-nine-three-dash-two-zero-two-three, to alter, extend, and structurally change a pre-existing non-conforming property and use in the Residence A zoning district for continued four-family dwelling use at a proposed development site to be comprised of two existing parcels to be combined at the property known as and numbered Seventy-six Granville Ave., Malden, Mass., and by the city's assessor's parcel ID number one-zero-four-seven-one-two-two-zero-eight, and the property known as Granville Place, no number, Malden, Mass., and by the city's assessor's parcel ID number one-zero-four-seven-one-two-two-zero-six.
Thank you very much, Diane. And just to remind all the planning board members and anyone in the audience, this is not a hearing of whether to grant Seventy-six Granville Avenue. What this is, is a petition to request that the Seventy-six Granville Avenue that was previously denied has changed their proposal enough to warrant coming back in less than two years. So just remind folks of that. And Counselor, you're welcome to start. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Thomas Callahan, with offices at One Center Street, Malden. As the chair, I was going to lead off with that comment, that we're here tonight just to look for consent to be back again for another hearing. We're not here for a special permit. We're just here to seek your consent that there is a specific and material change to our plans from the previous plans, which were denied, as the chair has cited in on -- it was denied at the April twelfth of two thousand twenty-three meeting. Mr. Chairperson, if I could approach, I have some -- I have plans that show a comparison between-- Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Thank you, sir. As you can see from the plans that I just -- that were just distributed to you, there is, in our view, a specific and substantial change. The plan on top is the prior plan from the April twelfth hearing, and the plan on the bottom is what we have filed recently. And I think if you just look at the plans, there is a chart outlining some differences to the right, but I think you'll see the dark -- I guess that's Doc Brown. The Doc Brown on the plan above had a substantial addition, whereas the plan we are proposing now is to keep the existing footprint. And the plan, the revised plan below, is the existing footprint presently. So I would certainly recommend to you that this is a substantial change from the previous submittal. The April denial, as I interpreted it, was based primarily on the finding of the size of the proposed dwelling, that is, the addition, which was a significant addition. And further, I think the board found that there was an overuse of the property with the building of that addition. The consent of the board does require a supermajority. Usually, as I think you all know, you require a supermajority, six out of nine. This consent requires eight out of nine. So eight out of nine would need to vote in the affirmative that there was a specific and material change from the previous plan. Again, referring to the plans, you'll see that there was a -- there's a significant change compared to the prior plans, and in fact, the prior plans had a sixty-eight percent expansion in the form of the addition, that is, sixty-eight percent over and above the existing structure. And now our plans are simply to stay within the existing footprint, so that that addition, that substantial addition, is no longer in the plans. Further, I think the board's findings, as I, again, as I interpret them, there was some concern about the use of Granville Place, the small street next to the property off of Granville Ave. In the prior plans, we had six parking spaces accessing off of Granville Place. The current plans, we have four parking spaces. That's the best we could do, because we do need the eight parking spaces to conform to the zoning. We have four in front. That's the best we could do in front, especially based on the contours of the lot. I think if you recall the proposal, the lot has some fairly significant changes in grade, so that -- but we did reduce the -- by two, the number of parking spaces accessing off of Granville Place, which, again, is addressing the board's concern. The Rainey case, I don't know if all of you had a chance to read my letter describing what we believe is a substantial change, and I think the staff report referred to the Rainey case as well. But the Rainey case speaks to the need, again, for the finding to be a -- that there are specific and substantial changes, but also that the changes address the concerns raised by the board in the previous hearing. And I would certainly state to you that it's our firm belief that we have addressed those concerns, both the overuse of the property and also, as best we could, we addressed the use of Granville Place to make our improvements. So in conclusion, I just request your consent, again, it has to be eight out of nine, based on the statute and based on our zoning ordinance, which is a supermajority. But I think you can -- you'll see from the plans, the specific and material changes that are on the current plans as opposed to the plans that were denied. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Does anyone have any questions for the Counselor? No, I don't see any Counselor, and I'm in agreement that it certainly is different enough that it warrants consideration for giving the consent. But thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Michelle, want to make a comment?
Yes, I just want everybody to know that you have a copy of the petitioner's letter that he just referenced. You have that plan that he just handed out that's a comparison. You also have a copy of the decision that was the denial decision, case twenty-three-oh-five. And you also have, not as part of the package, but as a separate package, your original package with your own notes, et cetera, the plans. It's labeled "old" on the top and "denied." So if anybody wants to reference anything more specific about the previous case as it compares to this new proposed case, you should have all the materials. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. At this point, if there are no other questions for Michelle, we'll entertain anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone that would like to speak in favor. Remind the planning board to make sure you speak into the microphone, and also, anyone who comes up and speaks in favor or in opposition of any of the hearings this evening, please make sure you speak into the microphone, lead off with your name and address for the record, and sign the clipboard, so we have correct spelling. Thank you.
And this is just in favor of filing the new petition?
Yes, for this one, it'd be just--
Right.
-- in consideration, in favor and opposition of allowing us to grant consent. Is there anyone else in -- is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
No.
Thank you very much. Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of granting the consent to be heard in less than two years? Anyone to speak in opposition? Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition? Seeing and hearing no one that wants to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report and recommendation, please?
Yes, so this is a planning report and recommendation dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I won't read it verbatim into the record, but it's incorporated here and by reference to the record of this hearing. I've given you the information about the case that was denied. As you heard, it was denied and decided on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, this case twenty-three dash oh-five. You do have a copy of that. As the chair and petitioner mentioned, there's a two-year waiting period required by statute that would expire on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. So consent's being requested, again, so the petition is -- to explain it again, it can be filed prior to that date. As you also heard from the petitioner, eight of the nine board members must vote affirmatively to grant the consent. You have copies of the plans. I'm referencing the plans that were submitted, the letter, et cetera, that's in your package. In terms of the grounds for denial, findings of fact cited in your prior decision, case twenty-three-oh-five, you stated that the proposal represents an overuse of the property. The proposal will be more detrimental to the neighborhood based on the following findings of fact. One, that the proposal significantly increases the overall size of the dwelling, specifically the footprint increases by nine-hundred-twenty-three square feet, or sixty-eight percent. You also stated that the proposal significantly increases the overall size of the dwelling. The total gross floor area increases by three-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-one square feet, or seventy-two percent. You also made the finding of fact that six proposed parking spaces require access via Granville Place, a private way, twelve feet in width. So in terms of -- I've given you the summary, specific and material changes. So I've given you or listed here the grounds for denial of the original petition, then how that compares to the proposed new petition, which you've already heard as part of the presentation. There's no increase or a nominal increase in the size of the footprint in the proposed new petition. The total gross floor area is only increased by nineteen percent, as opposed to seventy-two percent in the original petition. And there is a correction I will make on this report. Four parking spaces will require access via Granville Place. Under the new petition, previously six. So the staff report is incorrect where it says two. So the required finding, you must, and this is based on state and local law, the board must find specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based. So these standards are in this particular case law. Well, the specific and material changes is defined by this particular case, giving you an example here, which the petitioner already also went through, so I won't go through that again. This is cited from the case law. So the recommendation, which is made prior to the public hearing, provided that the board makes the required finding, is to grant the request for consent to allow the petition to be filed before April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? If there are no questions, is there a motion? Ken Antinucci.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to grant the request for consent to allow the petition to be filed before April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so a motion to grant the consent. Is there a second? Eric McCush.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much, Eric McCush. Has seconded Ken's motion to allow the consent. Okay, second. Okay, Michelle, when are you ready?
Okay, so a yes vote would be to grant consent. Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Tawadich Gepresalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Ronnie Rajverma?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
So consent has been granted to rehear this case in less than two years.
So once that petition is prepared and ready to be heard, we will schedule the public hearing by the planning board. Notices will be given to all abutters. It will be published in accordance with statute and posted. We will schedule that.
Thank you very much, Michelle. The next item we're going to hear this evening is ninety-one ninety-five Medford Street. So Diane, if you could read the notice for ninety-one ninety-five Medford Street, please. You can, hold on. There you go.
Thank you. The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, two fifteen Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at seven P.M. on Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, on the petition of Forty-One Warren LLC, permit application number R.E.S. zero-five-eight-nine-seven-seven-dash-two-zero-two-three, seeking a special permit under Title twelve, Chapter eight, I mean, Chapter twenty-eight, Section zero-one-zero-D-one of the Code of the City of Malden, to alter, structurally change, and change use of a pre-existing non-conforming property in the Residence A zoning district, namely, to convert the vacant storefront to a sixth residential dwelling unit, and to change the use of the building from a multifamily dwelling with five units to a multifamily dwelling with six units, at the property known as and numbered ninety-one-dash-ninety-five Medford Street, Malden, Mass., and by the city's assessor's parcel ID number zero-six-six-three-zero-four-four-zero-seven.
Thank you, Diane. Is -- I see the petitioner is present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Attorney Patrick McDonald, with offices at four-seventy-nine Eastern Avenue, on behalf of the petitioner, Forty-One Warren LLC. I'm appearing tonight, Chairman and members, to request a postponement of this matter. The plans initially submitted by the petitioner, when the application was filed after review by planning staff, were deemed to be deficient in a number of respects, specifically, a number of the requirements contained in the spec sheet that the planning board provides for such things, both the unit plans and the site plan. The architect, the petitioner's architect, was able to make the required or requested changes to those plans in a timely fashion, getting in under the wire, so to speak, filing them, if I'm not mistaken, on Monday of this week. So we believe the unit plans, at least now, comply with planning board specs. However, unfortunately, the petitioner's surveyor, who prepared the site plan, was not able to get those changes accomplished in a timely fashion, and as of tonight, revised plans, a revised site plan, has not been submitted to the board. We do anticipate that the surveyor will be able to make the required changes soon, but unfortunately, not in time for tonight's hearing. And as a consequence, we're respectfully requesting a tabling of the matter until the next available date at the discretion of the board, to be heard, with, again, the representation that we fully expect to be able to file the revised plans fairly quickly. And we don't anticipate that if the date were to be, for instance, as soon as the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board in October, that, you know, there would be a problem with that. We do apologize for the inability of the surveyor. Sometimes professionals cannot always accomplish what's requested of them in the timeframe that's asked. It was summertime. I don't know the exact reason why the surveyor couldn't do it. Suffice to say, he just couldn't get the plans revised quickly enough for tonight's hearing. But as I said, in communicating with my client, my understanding is that the surveyor will be able to make these changes relatively quickly now, so there wouldn't be any further delay beyond this one postponement.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Michelle, do you have anything to add?
No.
Does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? No questions. The one thing I will mention is I believe it's more than just the site plans. I think there's a few other issues that need to be resolved, and I suggest that you speak with the city counselor, because there are a few other issues, as I understand it, with some problems on the site that should be resolved before we take it up again.
More than happy to speak with Counselor Crowe, and we'll absolutely do that at Counselor's convenience, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Ken Antinucci.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table to the next available hearing date.
That could be pending receipt of the--
Pending receipt of all the required information.
Okay, Ken's made a motion. Eric McCush.
I'll second Ken's motion.
Thank you, Eric. Give me a second here. Okay. Michelle, when are you ready?
So a yes vote would be to table to the next available meeting, pending receipt of the required information. Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Tawadich Gepresalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
No.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Ronnie Rajverma?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
Yes. So eight to one. It's been, the tabling has been approved. Thank you very much, Counselor.
So notice of -- notice will be posted of the new hearing date. We will also mail to abutters. It is not required to be published.
Okay, so seven-twenty-six. The next hearing that we will hear is one-twenty-nine Commercial Street. Diane, if you could read the notice.
Yes. The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, two fifteen Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at seven P.M. on Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, on the petition of Old Town Trolley Tours of Washington, Inc., permit application number C.M.I.D.-zero-six-zero-nine-three-two-dash-two-zero-two-three, seeking a special permit under titles twelve-point-twelve-point-zero-three-zero and twelve-point-twenty-eight-point-one-point-zero-one-zero-E of the Code of the City of Malden, to allow warehouse use and to alter, structurally change, and change use of a pre-existing non-conforming property in the Industrial Two zoning district, namely, to renovate the existing building, construct overhead doors, and use the property for the storage of trolleys with accessory motor vehicle repair, fueling station, and administrative offices, at the property known as and numbered one-twenty-nine Commercial Street, Malden, and by the city's assessor's parcel ID number zero-five-five-two-three-three-three-zero-one.
Thank you, Diane. Is the Counselor present, or is the petitioner present? If you can come up, name an address for the record, please, and sign the clipboard.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Crompton. I'm the general manager of Old Town Trolley Tours. Currently, our business is at three-eighty Dorchester Avenue in South Boston. My personal address is seventeen Fort Point Avenue, Weymouth, Massachusetts.
Yes, sir, if you would mind giving your presentation?
Certainly will. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Firstly, thank you for taking the time to hear our application for the permit. We are Old Town Trolley Tours. We are currently based in South Boston, and we have been running sightseeing tours, taking people around the city of Boston for forty years now. You've probably seen us if you go into Boston. We're the guys with the big orange and green trolleys driving around everywhere, full of people leaning out beside, taking photographs. We've been at our home in South Boston for almost twenty-five years, and our company ownership sold that building several years ago, and we've been looking for a new home for some time. And we settled on Malden earlier this year, and then at the end of January this year, we went ahead and purchased the property at one-twenty-nine Commercial, with the intention of moving our entire business from South Boston to Malden. Malden will become our new home. This is where we will base our entire business in Boston. This is our vehicles, our staff, our administration, everything. We're very excited to be here, and this is really just the first stage of completing this project. Old Town Trolley has got a long history of being a good neighbor. We are actively involved in communities everywhere we work. We sponsor events. We get involved in local schools, local community services, local charitable concerns. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be part of a community. We put a lot of time and effort into making sure that we work with people, and we give people the opportunity to work with us. We like to feel that wherever we go, we bring benefits to that community, economic benefits. Excuse me. We are constantly recruiting. We're looking for people. We provide good jobs, good stable roles with good competitive rates of pay. We provide economic incentives to people, and of course, we add to the value of any property that we will purchase with the developments that we make and the improvements we're going to make. For our presentation this evening, I've got three-- For our presentation this evening, I've got three gentlemen with me who are part of our team. If you would allow us, I'd like each one of them to come up and be part of this presentation to explain their role in the project and what it is we're going to be doing. The first one is a gentleman called Brandon Lee, who works with our engineering company, Kelly Engineering, who have been instrumental in helping with the design of the project and putting together the plans that you have in front of you, the drawings, doing all the building assessment, and the impact that everything is going to have on the property.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Lee from Kelly Engineering Group. We're here for a special...
Sir, could you give us your address for the record?
Yep. Zero Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Mass. We're here before you for a special permit for warehouse use under section 12.12.030 of the Malden zoning code. We're also here to request a waiver for dumpster setbacks under section 12.20.030 H of the municipal code of zoning. The site is located on 129 Commercial Street, consists of a two-acre parcel. Located to the north is Charles Street. To the west is abutted by the MBTA Railroad, and then to the south is Adams Street, and on the east is Commercial Street. It's surrounded by other commercial development. Within the site, there's currently access to the building via Charles Street, and there's also a curb cut on Commercial Street. There's currently loading docks at the rear of the property. It's the previous location of Pianti Dosie Baking Company. They're no longer at the site right now. The site currently is completely fenced in. The proposed project entails renovating the existing building for Old Town Trolley. We will have a new curb cut along Charles Street. We've already filed a curb cut permit with the DPW, and that has been approved. There will be a new driveway entrance on Charles Street for the wash bay, and the architect will talk about that a little bit more. We'll also be upgrading the site. There's currently 30 parking spaces, and we're proposing a total of 52 parking spaces. We're also providing bicycle racks, six exterior racks. We're, as I mentioned before, we are requesting a waiver for the dumpster location. Under the bylaw, dumpsters have to be 20 feet from the property line. We've located at the back of the site. It's adjacent to the MBTA Railroad. It's right up against a retaining wall that's six feet, over six feet high, and it's, you know, the grade of the railroad is like 15 feet above the site, so it's really tucked away at the back of the site. We're also going to be improving the sites. We're adding six new trees on the property. We're also upgrading the stormwater management system with new catch basin water quality devices. This has all been discussed with the city engineer prior to our filing. There's already existing utilities on the site, which will remain. We're adding a new oil/gas separator for the new floor drains in the wash bay in the building. I think I'll turn it over to Alan.
Thank you. The next member of our team is Alan Popkin, who represents our architects, who's working on, obviously, all the design of the building of the property for us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Popkin from AHB Architects, 116 John Street in Lowell, Massachusetts. The architectural piece of this project is very limited. On the north elevation of this building, currently, there's one overhead door and a freezer unit. On the south side of the building, they have four existing at-dock loading doors, and the intent here is to remove that freezer unit and install a new overhead door wide enough for the trolleys to come in through that door. It would then pass through a, we'll call it car wash, but a wash big enough for a trolley to go through, as well as a fueling station, and then park inside of that building. On the south side of the building, those four existing overhead dock height doors will be modified and turned into three larger doors. The grade they will be brought up so that they are drive-in height, so that the trolleys, once they're parked in there, can then drive out through the other side of the building. On the east side of the building, on the angular piece of it, we are also intending to cut open a new overhead door simply to bring in trolleys that need minor modifications to it, an oil modification, tires, air, small modification to a vehicle through that door. So inside of the space is really not that much that's happening, that's changing there. We are looking to potentially sublease a small piece of that space on the first floor, as well as on the second floor. On the second floor, there's a small mezzanine space, office space. We're making some small renovations to that, bringing that up to current codes, and with a, with a very small piece that we may sublease there as well. There'll be some floor drains and some infrastructure that's part of the trolley wash piece of it that will then connect to the oil/gas separate outside of the building. And essentially, that's, that's really it. As I said, not a large architectural piece of it. Thank you.
Sir, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
In looking at the plans, I see references to a westerly door that's going to be used for egress. Is that accurate?
The west side facing Commercial Street?
The westerly side would be facing the train tracks.
Oh, the west side, by the, by the, the trolley wash side of it.
Is that where you'll be exiting, or you'll be exiting out the southerly side?
Well, we're looking to provide a number of different exits in this building, so we're still working through those things, since we're detailing how the ramp is going to work there. So that egress door may need to be made in a different location, but we want to make sure that we comply with all the codes for length of travel for egress.
Okay, yeah, no, because I was curious, when I was reviewing the plan, it said it was going to exit on the west side, and I wasn't sure there was enough room for a trolley to go out the west and make a turn and continue traveling.
Understood.
So that hasn't been finalized yet?
Not yet, no, sir.
Thank you. And you said that you were going to bring the pavement up to meet the, the new doors that you're going to put in? That would be on, on the northerly side and the southerly side?
On the southerly side, those are dock height doors, so we need to bring the pavement up to floor level. On the, on the north side, we're actually doing the opposite. We're actually lowering the elevation there and ramping in so that the trolleys will not bottom out as they come in off the street through the parking lot into the building.
Okay, so you're going to adjust that piece of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you designing the, the fuel supply inside the building?
We'll be coordinating that with, coordinating that with our engineering team, yes, sir.
Do, do you currently do that on Dorchester Ave?
Yes, we do.
And are there any special issues that need to be, that you've had to address in, in South Boston that you would need to continue in Malden?
There are things that we do to protect that. We've met with the fire department onsite, and we've talked about this, so that fueling tank gets protection all around it so that any vehicle can't hit it. It has fire protection devices as required around it. It is monitored with special monitoring systems so that if that, that level of diesel goes down just a small amount, there's an alarm which will notify people in case there's any issue with it leaking or any, any of that thing. And it is with a double-walled container, so any leaking system is, is mitigated prior to discharging on the floor.
How big is that? Do you know offhand how big the unit was, the proposed units going to be?
Three thousand gallons.
Three thousand gallons. How many times do the trolleys need to refuel during the course of a day? Can they make a full day on one, on one tank of gas or diesel?
Sorry, it's, it's easier if I...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
The trolleys refuel twice a week.
Oh, twice a week.
So not even every day. Generally, there's, there's always exceptions, but generally, when we fill a trolley up, we'll get three days of regular use out of it before we have to fill it again.
Thank you. With regard to the trolleys, what, what's your utilization? I, I understand that there's going to be 45 in the inventory. What, what do you figure your daily utilization is? All 45?
No. It's a, it's a seasonal business as well as a peak and off-peak business. So right now, this is our busiest time of the year, and obviously, the weekends are even busier than the midweek. So out of a fleet of 45 trolleys, on the busiest day of the year, we would potentially be using 32 to 34 of those vehicles on any one time. And that drops down, a Tuesday in February, we might only be using six of them.
Okay, thank you. You can continue. I just, I appreciate you answering those questions.
Thank you.
The, the next member of our team, if you're willing, is Dan Dumay.
I'm sorry, Eric Henry.
Sorry. Put speakers to sign.
Oh, yes, they should be signing in. That's, we had asked them to. I, I know they've been giving the name and address.
Thank you.
The next member of our team is Dan Dumay from MBM. He's our transportation consultant, traffic consultant, I should say, who did the traffic evaluation study, which was submitted as well.
Hi, good evening. Dan Dumay with MDM Transportation Consultants, 28 Lord Road, Marlborough. So as part of this project, we first met with planning and Michelle on a Zoom call and went over the specific characteristics of the trolley, since it's not a typical kind of land use around. So we went over it, and we figured out what the closest land use was, warehousing, and then we actually went out and collected specific data, which I'll talk about, at the Old Town Trolley's existing location. So the study locations we looked at were Charles Street, Commercial Street, and then Adams Street at Commercial, and then the two site driveways. We went out and we collected data out there, seven to nine and four to six on the weekday, which is the busiest time period for the, for the roads. We did inventory of the existing transit, so there's a bus, bus route right along Commercial, and then you got the T station with the orange line at MBTA. So it's set up well for about 30% of their employees are expected to use public transportation to get to and from the site. The site itself, in terms of trips that it's going to generate, is going to generate two different types of vehicles. It's going to be a passenger car for the employees, and then obviously, the trolleys. And then the warehouse subtenant, we're expecting those to primarily be passenger vehicles as well. So we went out and we counted, so there's a total of 18 trolley trips in the morning. So there were 16 that went out, there was two that went in. They may have been relocating on the site, but we counted them as coming in anyway. So there's 18 in the morning, then the afternoon peak hour, there's 15 trolleys. There was 10 that came in and five that went out for the evening trolley routes. And in terms of employees, there's about four employees in and four out in the morning, and three came in in the afternoon and 12 exiting, so a total of 15. So we're looking at a total of 26 to 30 trips for this type of project. It's very manable within the existing roads. As I said, the, the trolleys are going to be staggered, so they obviously didn't all come out at once. So beginning around eight o'clock, the trolleys begin to come out all the way to 11:00, and then there's kind of a break, and then they, they stagger back in the afternoon, and then the evening trolleys go out around 5:00 and then come back in usually after 9:00. The site itself historically was a bakery, which is a manufacturing use, was 51,700 square feet of use. So the trolley business itself is going to generate approximately 30 peak hour trips, and then historically, the bakery was closer to 40, 35 and 38 during the peak. So looking at a slight reduction overall in traffic generated at the site with this project in place. We did look at where the employee trips would go to and from, and we estimated approximately 30% from each side on Charles Street, about 5% from the city hall side on Commercial, and then the remaining trips, about 30% from the south, from the Boston side. The trolleys themselves cannot fit under the Charles Street and Adams Street bridges due to the height restrictions. So they're going to enter the site, they're going to come up Commercial Street from the south, make a left on Charles and a left in, enter the building, they'll park in there, fuel up, wash, and then in the morning, they're going to come out, they're going to exit onto the Commercial Street driveway, make a right-hand turn, and head to Boston 100% of them. As, as part of the, the project, we did have it peer reviewed by Van Ass, and they came up with some recommendations, which Chris is going to, is going to go over, but one of the requests was, since we did our, our counts out there in July, which is the peak season for the trolley, it might not have been the peak season for the people on the street due to the schools not being in session, so we did go back out and did a spot count at the critical Commercial Charles intersection just as September last week on Thursday, and there was no material change in the, in the traffic for the September in the July. Particularly, the weekday morning was about just under 3% higher in the September, so it was a little higher, but it was 4% lower in that, that evening period. So there's no material change in operations and level of service that we looked at, at any of the intersections, which have shown to be level of service D or better, which is highly acceptable for an urban city environment. I'll hand it back to Chris to go over the recommendations from all the different peer reviews and from the city.
Thank you, members of the board. We obviously submitted these plans, and we received the recommendations from the city planner's office, and if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to just run through some of the recommendations there, because there are three things I would like to ask for your consideration on out of this list of recommendations. The first one is obviously consideration for the item that Brandon already mentioned, which is the waiver regarding the location of the trash dumpster and where we place that. The location that's indicated on the plans is the logical space for this. It is away from any neighbors. It is away from any egress or entrance point, and it will not be visible, it will not be able to be seen. The closest thing to it is the raised MBTA line, so it's not impacting on anybody's residence or anybody else's business. So we would ask for your consideration on the waiver for the location of the trash dumpster. Secondly, regarding the list of recommendations, item 6B3, which was the recommendation that we provide employees with a transit pass subsidy, at least 50% of the cost of a Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority monthly link pass. I would ask for some flexibility on this on the basis that approximately 30% of our employees use the MBTA to get to work. However, out of that 30%, there's roughly 50% of those staff never actually would come to Malden in the morning or the evening. They're the staff who go directly into Boston. For example, the majority of our sales team, our hotel concierge, they don't actually come to our base of operations where the trolleys are. They go directly into the city. So whether we are based in South Boston or based in Malden, it is irrelevant to them. They're using the MBTA now. They're not going to change their MBTA usage just because we change our base of operations. The second aspect of that is the ones who use the MBTA, not all of them use the rail. Many of them, approximately 25% of the remaining ones, actually use the MBTA buses, and the cost is completely different. An MBTA bus pass is $55 a month, an MBTA train pass is $90 a month. So if we're being required to pay 50% of a $90 pass for somebody who's only buying a pass that costs $55, that's a bit disproportionate. So we would also ask for your consideration on that point. And the final point that we would ask for your thoughts on is 6C, items one, two, and three. Items one, two, and three. The recommendation there is that we make the following improvements at the Commercial Street Charles Street intersection. C one says evaluate the yellow and all-red clearance intervals and pedestrian face timings and adjust as necessary to meet current design standards. Six C two, upgrade, repair, or replace the pedestrian push buttons, signs, and saddles as necessary to meet the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. And then six C three, reconstruct the wheelchair ramps on the corners of the intersection to meet ADA requirements. At first pass, when we read that, I looked through it and I thought, okay, yeah, we can certainly work through that. However, then after discussions with our engineers and transportation management planners and architects, we realized that that is actually a substantial project on its own that I'm not sure was considered. The entire intersection there is currently not ADA compliant. And for us to do the work that is required is a project that our best estimate of cost is well over two-hundred thousand dollars, which we feel is a disproportionate ask for the size of the property and the scope of who we are as a company. It's not as simple as just putting down some textured surfaces on the ramps to make all the ramps, for example, ADA compliant. The current ramps are, excuse me, what we call apex ramps off the corner of the curb. We would have to level out the entire curb, replace it, relocate the ramps back on each of the four corners, move the entire crosswalk, the stop line, back roughly eight to ten feet. And then we would have to make new curb cuts, new ramps, new leveling. The process of doing that would entail removing and relocating utility poles, national grid power poles, the traffic signal poles, the traffic signal control box, and at least one water and sewer line, which is currently under the street. And members of the board, we're a trolley company. We're not a construction company. We don't, you know, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be part of the community. But we feel that item six C is an unreasonable and disproportionate ask for us to be able to cope with. And that's the end of our presentation. We thank you for your consideration.
Okay, sir. Few questions for you.
Certainly.
What are your hours of operation?
So we operate the trolleys in the city of Boston from nine till five. And what that means is that's the daytime trolley. Then we have evening tours, which run approximately from six till nine P.M. So in terms of being at the business, the first people on site in the morning are normally our maintenance team. They arrive around about six A.M. The last people to leave are our evening team, who normally leave between ten and ten-thirty P.M. So there's varying amounts of people there during the entire day. There's never a time when everybody's in the building all at the same time. So for example, we may have three mechanics there in the morning, but then they finish their shift in the afternoon and we have two more mechanics who come in to work the evening shift.
Okay. And I understand that it varies, but about how many drivers and/or assistants would you have on site during the nine-to-five timeframe?
Actually, on site, not very many at any one time because the drivers will come in, have a briefing, check their vehicles, do their pre-trip inspection, and then they leave. They're not staying on location. The most drivers we would have on site at any one time is probably eighteen, twenty, maybe twenty-two at the peak time. The most people we would have on site at any one time is probably between thirty and thirty-five.
So and that would include any of the support staff doing the diesel work, the washing, the cleaning up, and the administration?
Yes.
How many support people?
So in the offices, we have sixteen people who work in the offices.
That's administrative support?
That's administrative staff, departmental management, the operations team. But again, they, not all the office staff are there when the early morning drivers are in. So a lot of the early morning drivers have already left by the time the office staff arrives. So they're not necessarily all there at the same time.
Right. But in the support people, like the diesel mechanics and the trolley washers, how many of those?
So we've got a total of five mechanics. We normally have three in the morning and two in the afternoon and evening. Trolley detailers and washers, we have four of those. There's normally three of them on any one day. And they start work at between two and three P.M. and work through until seven or eight P.M.
Okay. And what I'm trying to get a better understanding of is how many people will actually be parking on site, whether they're off driving in Boston or not?
Yes.
That's seventy percent that will drive to the Molden location.
The maximum, based on what we do right, so our business right now is essentially the same size as it will be in Molden. And based on current counts that we've done right now, the most we've ever had of people parking on site is between forty and forty-five at any one time in total.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. You're choosing to sublease a portion of the building?
Yes.
Why is that? And who do you think might be interested in picking up that thirteen thousand square feet or whatever remains?
The motivation, I have to admit, is predominantly financial. The building was a big purchase for us. You know, we're a decent-sized company, but we're not an Apple or a Google or something. So buying a building this size for us was, you know, it was a big purchase. And to make the numbers work, we would like to offset some of the cost by having a tenant in there. The building is too big for us to use just as a sole occupier. There is excess space. So we can carve out approximately twelve thousand square feet of the ground floor. And then it's about two thousand square feet, two-and-a-half thousand square feet of the office space that we can, we don't need. So it makes sense for us to look for a suitable tenant. In terms of who that will be, we do not have a tenant in mind yet. We're currently advertising and working with property management companies to try and find a tenant. The ideal person would be somebody who, somebody who's storing plumbing supplies or maybe last-mile distribution, someone like that, who's not doing any, no heavy industry, manufacturing, anything like that. We're looking for someone who is very low-impact. We're not, you know, we don't want vehicles going in and out of there all day. It's really somebody who's looking for some sort of dry storage. That would be the ideal tenant. But we don't have anybody yet. We're not desperate. Yes, there is a financial aspect to this, of course there is, but we're not desperate. We don't need to rush into an agreement with somebody who's not going to be suitable.
Okay, thank you. And is the trolley portion that you're working with, are they part of a bigger group? A more national group? Because don't you have, doesn't this, I'm not sure if it's run as a franchise or if it's owned by the same people, but they own several different communities and states?
Yes, you are absolutely right. We are part of a company called Historic Tours of America. Historic Tours of America was founded almost fifty years ago in Key West in Florida. The story, you know, could go on for hours. But they actually got into trolleys by accident. They started off redeveloping Key West, excuse me, after the Navy moved out. They bought quite literally a farm truck and a trailer and put some lawn chairs on it to take people to Deval Street because they were developing it. They realized people were enjoying riding around on the lawn chairs on a trailer more than going to the museum they'd built. So they bought an old trolley and then another one and then another one and so on. So right now, we have operations in Key West, St. Augustine in Florida, Savannah in Georgia, Nashville, Tennessee, Washington, D.C., and San Diego in California. Boston was the second operation they opened after Key West. This coming year will be our fortieth anniversary of being open in Boston.
And which is the largest unit?
The two operations which carry the most people are, strangely enough, St. Augustine and Savannah. We are not one of the big megalith companies, as it were. We do very, very well in some of these, from a tourism perspective, of what we call secondary markets. We don't operate in places like New York City or Las Vegas. It's too big for us. Boston and Washington, D.C. are our two biggest markets in terms of the size of the city. And we do very well here. And we do very well in Washington, D.C., but primarily because we've been established for a long time. So we're very well set up with very strong foundations here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner? Eric McCush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is probably more my own ignorance, but the fuel oil separation system?
Yes.
How does that work? Is it like something on a boat? We have a filter and you just take it out and throw it away? Or it's like, yes, it's be cleaned, how often does it get cleaned?
It's essentially a big drain that is filled with ever-decreasing in size particles. And the fuel, oil, gas, oil and water filters down into there. And then over a period of time, whatever time it is that's specified by the manufacturer or installer, it's come and it's emptied and it's cleaned out and taken away and disposed of. For example, one we have in Dorchester Avenue now, they come once a year. They clean it out, they empty it out, they remove the oil and the oil particles that have been separated that allows the clean water to run off into the drainage system. And that's cleaned out and taken away and drained and disposed of.
Thank you.
Kenny Tinucci.
Good evening. Along those lines for the indoor, how many oil-water separators are you going to be installing?
Just one.
Just the one?
Yeah.
So is the current, is there a plan to change the pitch of the parking areas? Is it just for the wash, the wash area, the maintenance area? And how are you going to get everything to this one drain?
That will be the job of people like Alan, who spoke earlier in terms of the actual drainage design and plans and Brandon as well. We've been having a lot of discussions about this to make sure that when we do it, we do it the right way. We link into whatever wastewater lines there are and we link in appropriately and properly. So right now, I could not tell you exactly how it will be done because we're working through the plans about right now.
Okay. Well, I'm sure it'll, it's all going to be going through the
Yes.
Port health and
It's an engineering project that has to be done correctly. It's like, if you're going to do it, you do it once and you do it the right way. You know, our intention is to make this property our home here in Molden for the long-term future. And so whatever we do, we want to do it once, we want to do it right. We don't want to be having to dig anything up in ten years' time because we got it wrong right from the outset. We'd rather do it properly now and be confident that twenty years, thirty years, forty years down the line, it's still there and it's still working and everything's still fine.
Okay. All right. Related, the fuel, the fueling station within. So it's, I'm assuming it's a three-thousand gallon tank. You said, I'm assuming it's diesel?
Yes.
And the tank itself is above grade?
Yes.
Double-line tank? And is there a plan, is there also going to be like a containment berm around this as well?
Yeah, it's the same tank we have right now in South Boston. It's a three-thousand gallon, double-walled diesel tank. Diesel fuel is, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it, but you could drop a match into it and it won't, it's non-combustible. The way we have the tank set up right now is against one wall with Jersey barriers around it. There's a completely separated fire suppression system. There's multiple alarm systems that notify a variety of people if a level drops literally more than quarter of an inch when it's unexpected. We have specific people who are trained on the use of the fueling and only specific people who have a code, an access code to actually unlock the system so they can use it. The principle would be exactly the same here in Molden. It would be in a self-contained area that we would build with the appropriate fire suppression systems. We met with the deputy fire chief. He came and looked around the property. We showed him the plans and explained what we were going to be doing. The company that we use, Northeast Petroleum, are very, very experienced in doing this. They're a professional fuel supplier. So this is not a project we would be doing on our own with, you know, two handymen with, you know, wrenches and hammers from the back of a car. This would be something that we would be installing professionally and properly by the actual supplier of the tank. The fire suppression system, we've been talking to Narelle already so they know exactly what we're doing and how to do this. And we would put the same safeguards in that we have now. That tank has been in South Boston for almost twenty-five years. We've not had a single leak, not one.
Okay. And assuming it gets filled from outdoors?
Yes.
It'll be filled from outside and there's going to be enough access? Any idea when that happens? Is that off-hours, we have fuel deliveries?
It's during the day. So what happens now is the truck will pull up during, it's usually during a midweek day, which is when we're not using it and the trolleys are out. A big, long hose comes in, they fill it up and they go away again.
Okay. One, thank you. Good answers. One question about traffic. And I don't know if you can answer it or your consultant, but when you did the traffic counts in July or September, was there any existing road construction or lane closures or roads shut down? Because there has been a lot of work out in that area on Charles Street over the last six months.
When we did the both counts, those roads were not shut down.
Okay, so they're completely open, both?
We did them with video, so we have video. We went back and reviewed them.
All righty. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, is there a considered difference between stormwater management and drainwater management?
Not to my knowledge. To my knowledge, it's, and I'll be perfectly honest, I'm not an expert on this. Brandon is probably the best one, but essentially, it's management of all water as the representative that I would be concerned with.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are the same things, stormwater management.
And the reason why these plans are not for us today is because I see that on the other section in the presentation, the proposal is under review by the city engineer. We are, we have before us in the past, presented with stormwater, drainwater plans and for review and for comment as well. So I'm wondering, we're asked to be, the papers before us and the plans are absolutely, all the plans are not before us.
So I spoke with a city engineer before we even filed. I spoke with him via Zoom and I discussed the project with him. He provided his recommendations and we've incorporated all of those recommendations into the plans that we filed. So all the stormwater upgrades shown on the plans, those are all per his recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Let's shift a little bit one more. With regards to ADA compliance at your current footprint in South D. How do you have these same, how is that around that area with regards to? Is it walkable?
The South Boston, the area we're in off Dorchester Avenue and Old Colony Avenue, I don't know if you're familiar with it. The sidewalks, the roads, they need a bit of TLC. And I would not say any of those sidewalks are currently ADA compliant. There's more potholes in some of them than dirt roads that I've driven around.
Thank you.
Excuse me, and just on a quick question on, to expand on that. Of your workforce, how many people would be making use of something that might need to be ADA compliant?
Right now, none.
So you don't have anyone?
No. No. We have ADA, you know, we, again, as a company, we're very conscious of the ADA requirements because it's a fundamental aspect of what we do for a living. Our vehicles have to be ADA compliant. We deal with a lot of people, a lot of passengers, who have a variety of different challenges that we have to make sure we can accommodate them and take them on tours and show them around the city of Boston. So we're very, very familiar with the ADA rules, regulations, and working with them. Our offices, we make a point of making sure they are ADA accessible. Our offices, we make a point of making sure they are ADA accessible. So if we do have employees or visitors who have a requirement, whether it's mobility or anything else, we can cope with it, we can deal with it and make them feel comfortable. Right now, we do not have any of our team members who do have any ADA requirements. But a fundamental part of this property, again, you'll notice on the plans, we will be constructing a grand floor office, grand floor restrooms. So if we do employ anyone in the future that does require any accommodations, we're all ready for them.
Okay, thank you. Tawadzic Gabrislasi.
What kind of like job opportunity or position you guys will have as Malden resident?
We're constantly recruiting, constantly looking for people. Right now, I mean, even as we're coming towards the end of our season, we're still recruiting. But every year we have a fairly intense ramp up period, which really starts at the beginning of January and runs through to the end of April. And during that time, we're recruiting for drivers, people who want to drive trolleys, actors, guides who can speak. We offer full CDL training, so we have our own, we're a DOT registered and licensed CDL trainer. So we can bring people in and actually do the training and take them and pass them and give them a CDL license as well. So we're looking for drivers constantly, we're looking for sales representatives, we look for actors because we run what we call our Ghosts and Gravestones tour in the evening, which we have a cast of actors. We need hotel concierge because we run the hotel concierge, that's in several hotels. We're looking for mechanics, we're looking for administration people. It's constant, we're always looking for good people. We like to feel that we treat people very well, we offer competitive rates of pay, we offer significant signing bonuses to people. Right now, if somebody joins us as a, they want to be a driver, trolley driver, for example, they would join our company with $4,000 signing bonus. They would start on $23 an hour for training. We would train them for the CDL. When they got their CDL, then the pay goes up to $24 an hour. They get good gratuities, frequent incentives, bonuses. We have attendance bonuses every year, which we offer additional incentives. So there's, we like to try to think it's a good place to work. So there's a lot of opportunities for people, locals who are looking for employment.
So do you guys like, like prefer like to advertise in city of Malden? Or somebody have to go to the website or somebody has to come to like face to face to the office?
The best luck we've had so far in recruiting is using websites like Indeed. Indeed in particular seems to be the place to go to look for jobs. But we have, we have two trolleys, for example, which are wrapped in big signs that say, "We're hiring." And we drive those all around the city every day, looking for people. We put ads in newspapers, we will advertise on the radio, anywhere where we think we're going to get traction and some sort of feedback.
So what is the company name? If somebody go to like Job Indeed, it should say like the company name. I'm not sure because I usually use Job Indeed.
If anybody goes to trolleytools.com and it says, "We're hiring."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You all said Tawadzic?
Yes, thank you.
Stephanie Stone.
Thank you. You mentioned getting involved with the community. Could you give examples of what you've done in your current location?
We sponsor a variety of charitable events for schools, for sporting associations, for different associations who represent disadvantaged people. We provide trolleys for free for parades and promotional events to transport people around. We will move people around. We, I mean, for example, during COVID, we sent trolleys every day moving people from the Pine Hill Shelter on behalf of the city of Boston, moving them around. We will sponsor either in kind with vehicles or sometimes monetary donations, a variety of events. We give tickets to people for raffles and charity events. We donate vehicles for things like the Touch a Truck Parade and it's, it's a whole range of things. We do school trips, we do field trips for people. It's a big list.
And so you, are you changing any of your roots at all? Are you still just focusing on Boston? Would there be anything in this area?
Absolutely, absolutely. We already have done, we took part in the Malden Porch Fest earlier this year and we donated an element of vehicles for that. And yeah, absolutely, we want to be seen as part of the community. That's, that's what we do, that's how we work, that's how we operate. And it's the same in every city we're in. It's no different here to every other city. We, we like, you know, we want to be one of, one of the crowd.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quick question. For your drivers, about how many hours do they get a year? They don't get 2,080, do they?
Oh, good grief. So full-time drivers, at least 40 hours a week. Right now, we have as much overtime as they want. They're DOT restricted in terms of the number of hours they can actually drive. They're only allowed to drive a maximum of six days a week and we're only allowed to work a maximum of 70 hours in any eight-day period as well before they have to have time off. But we have, I mean, a lot of our drivers, what they will do is during, because we are a very seasonal business. What a lot of our drivers will do is from the start of the season, sort of May, June, they just, they just work, they say goodbye to the families, they pat the kids on the head and they just work as many hours as they're allowed to work by law until they get to the end of October. And then they take the family and go to Florida for three months and just take time off. You know, it's, it's become, I don't want to say standard practice, but there's a lot of them do it. That's just how they work. Our drivers are a real mixed bag. We have younger people who are coming into this as a career, excuse me, and they want to make this their lifestyle. So they have less opportunities to travel because they've probably got kids in school and a family around here. But many of our drivers are not necessarily retired, but semi-retired. They've had a career somewhere else, they've retired, they're not quite ready to hang up their driving gloves yet. So they'll come and work for us and they'll drive an equal number of hours. But then, of course, in winter, they're, well, I'm retired, I don't want to drive a trolley around in 30 degrees when it's snowing and raining. So they'll go south and take a month, take two months off and then come back again in the summer. So it varies, but they, they work literally as many hours as they can. We're very fortunate and that we've got a wonderful team of people who genuinely enjoy what they do. They care about what they do. Our industry is a strange industry. There's not many people in our business who do it just because it's a job. People tend to love it or they hate it. It's not right for everyone. But the people who do do it really enjoy it and really buy into it. And as a result of that, we have a fantastic team who, we're never short of people wanting to work.
No, that's great, enviable place to be. Does anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner? Michelle.
Yes, thank you. Could you just explain again what your, are you the main owner? Or you're, you're, is it a subsidiary? I didn't quite understand how that works.
I'm the general manager of the Boston operations, so I run our operations here in Boston. And we are a subsidiary, a wholly owned subsidiary of Historic Tours of America. Historic Tours of America is owned predominantly by two families, the original founding families who first started the company 50 years ago.
Okay, so you, will you be the person on site every day at this location?
Yes.
You'll be in one of these administrative offices?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be in charge of the day-to-day operations?
Yes.
And how everything's functioning? Okay, thank you. And how many trolleys are actually parked inside at one time?
Right now, we have 45 vehicles in total.
So, but how many are typically parked inside the building?
So right now at South Boston, we can't quite fit them all in. We fit 41 inside and four outside. The plan is here in Malden, we will be able to fit all 45 inside at night.
Okay, so we didn't see that on the plan, but what are they just lined up like?
Yeah, the, the plan is that the access to the building will be from the north side of a building on Charles Street. We bring them in, we wash them and then we just drive them straight and we just line them up, ready to leave in the morning. It's, I shouldn't say we don't like backing up trolleys because that implies we can't back up trolleys, but truth be told, we don't like backing up trolleys. It's much easier to just keep them, keep them straight, it's safer that way, it's easier that way. We're less likely to have any accidents or incidents. And then in the morning, they just drive straight out. They come out of the south side of a building, onto Commercial Street, take a right and head down into the city that way.
Okay, thank you. What about the recommendation that we received for the interior bike room?
Yeah, absolutely, we can, we can make the space for that. We will, we were planning on bike racks anyway. The idea to move that inside is no trouble at all, we comply with that.
Okay, so that was one of the peer review recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in terms of this, you mentioned the handicap accessibility offices on the ground floor.
Yes.
Where would that be if you're leasing that space to the tenant?
That would be adjacent to the area that we are allocating as our maintenance bay. And that would be, we need officers down there anyway for our fleet manager. So it's, instead of just building one office, we'll actually build two offices down there and that will accommodate that need. And there'll also be a restroom down on the ground floor in the southwest corner.
Okay, so yeah, I see the restrooms and I see a maintenance office in the maintenance area, a parts room and electrical room, stairs, vestibule. And then I see the tenant spaces. So where would your offices be, they're part of, they'd be?
On the next floor.
Your office is right, but where would this handicap accessible office be?
On the ground floor, next to, so it's the same location as where you see the maintenance office. It would be in that location there.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then in terms of the tenant, the sub-tenant.
Yes.
If you could clarify, or maybe the architect can, the numbers aren't exactly adding up. And I'm curious, what is the actual square footage? I see the plan say 11,209 on the first floor, the second floor is 1273, but I heard you say 2,500 and then the sign out front says 12,000, leasing 12,000. So which is it?
That's my mistake. It's approximately 12,000. There's just short of 12,000 downstairs on the ground floor. But right now, the actual area has not been exactly determined. Because if we get a tenant in who says, well, I'll be a tenant and they fit all, you know, the bill for everything else we need, we check the boxes, but say we only want 10,000 square feet, then we will subdivide it and just give them 10,000 square feet. And then upstairs in the offices, we've currently got, I think you're right, that's my mistake, sorry. It's approximately 1,300 square feet apportioned off of a tenant. But again, that depends on what the tenant requires. If a tenant comes up and says, well, I don't need 1,300 square feet, but they check all the boxes for what we're looking for for a tenant, then we'll adjust accordingly. This is just how we've planned it for now, so we can get the advertisement out there and try to promote the property to attract a suitable tenant.
And so do you think it would be the same tenant occupying the second and first floor or?
We, I hope so, yes. I can't categorically say, yes, it definitely will be, but we're not looking for two tenants. We don't want to, again, we don't want to be a landlord, you know, and have multiple tenants. I would much rather find one tenant who needs roughly 11,000 to 12,000 square feet downstairs and about 1,300 square feet upstairs. That would be the utopian solution for us. Whether we'll find someone who needs exactly that, I can't say, but that's what we're looking for.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking part of this is, one of the recommendations is, and this has to do with the traffic impacts and the parking.
Yes.
You have, you know, you, we, this was reviewed for warehouse use, so wasn't the tenant warehouse use. So in the parking, you have like exactly what you need for the warehouse use, right? You don't have any extra. So even though there are other uses that might be allowed by Rite, they could generate traffic, they could generate different parking issues. So we were trying to incorporate, or we will be trying, I will be recommending to the board that you incorporate a condition that will really put some parameters around that tenant space. So I was told that it would be warehouse use. But I'm curious or concerned a little bit about the numbers. I use the numbers on the plans, but it sounds like maybe they're a little bit loose or so. When we get to that point, maybe we need to adjust those numbers because, again, I don't want there to be any issue with the plans or with the tenants or what the special permit would allow you to do if it's granted. So you're saying 12,000 and 1,300 is, those are the max you think would be? 12,000 on the first floor and 1,300 on the second?
Yes, we wouldn't want to go any larger than that because to go any larger than that would encroach on the space that we need for our business.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the petitioner? Anything else you'd like to add, sir?
We're just very grateful for your consideration, especially with regard to the recommendations. And I fully agree with the concern about the tenant and making sure we find the right solution there. We've already turned down two proposals from tenants who we felt wouldn't be suitable because they didn't comply with exactly what you were just talking about. So we are very conscious that we have to find the right tenant that fits with the plans and does not compromise what we're trying to do with the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll take anyone who would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone that would like to speak in favor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Romero and members of the board. My name is Neil Anderson, I live at 56 Mill Street, Malden. For the record, I know many of you as I've been the city councillor here in Malden for a number of years. So I have to tell you that in addition to being able to have sat where you all are sitting now and recognizing the awesome responsibility that you have and making sure that the petitions that you grant fit well here in our city of Malden, I'm also an employee of Old Town Trolley. Chris Compton was talking to you about the people that come to work at Old Town Trolley and I think he was describing me as one of those older persons who has had a career working and in my older age decided that I wanted to do something to get out of the house for a while. And the, the moniker of trying to work at Old Town Trolley was that it was a place that you could be in, you know, not just unemployed, but fun-employed. Because that's what we consider ourselves when we work at Old Town Trolley, that those of us who work there are fun-employed. I started about 20 years ago while I was working for a couple of days a week during the tourist season. I was a trolley conductor. I had to, actually, at the time, I had already had a commercial driver's license because I owned a small oil company and in retirement, I wanted to maybe get a part-time job of looking to do something with driving a truck or what have you. And I looked in the newspaper and there, under the, under the want ad section where they were looking for people with a truck driving experience was the advertisement for folks who would like to come and work as trolley tour conductors. And so I went to Old Town Trolley and I thought I was going to go for a, an interview. And as I was preparing for the interview, I got there and they told me that this was not going to be an interview, but you were going to be doing an audition. Because what we do as trolley tour conductors are that we provide to the tourists of, that come from all over the world, coming into Boston, we tell them the history stories of our great city of Boston. We tell them the old town story, the old town trolley. We tell them the old town story, the old town trolley stories of Paul Revere and the Old North Church, and take them out to the Charlestown Navy Yard and show them the USS Constitution. And we, we share with them the things that many of us who grew up here in the city of Malden probably talked about as we were in school, but got a real great understanding of it when we would be telling our tourists about these things that, that are here. And so I, I did that for four or five seasons and, and got away from it. And twenty years later, I decided after I left the, the city council that I wanted to do something on a part-time basis again. So I once again looked into becoming a trolley tour conductor at Old Town Trolley. I have to tell you that it was a little different, a little more difficult for me, learning to drive a forty-five passenger vehicle, having to qualify with the state police to get a commercial driver's license. A little more difficult doing that at the age of seventy-nine, as I did when I did it at fifty-nine. But the job was so important to me, of being able to, to do such a fun thing and a, and a great thing of bringing people into our city and showing them this, this great organization and this great community that we live in. So I'm here, obviously, to speak in, in support of this petition. And I have the vantage point of being not only sitting in the seats where you all are sitting and recognizing the awesome responsibility that you have, and making sure that the petitions that you grant are something that's good for the city of Malden, but also having the vantage point of knowing that this organization that I'm currently working for is everything that Chris Compton was just talking about. You know, it's an organization that has been good to the community. One of the things that I want to highlight to you is that, is what they have done in South Boston. Many of the employees that work for Old Town Trolley came out of South Boston. These were, these were, they recruited conductors, mechanics, salespersons, that all lived in the local community. We can expect that same thing to happen right here in Malden. You know, the people that get hired by Old Town Trolley don't have to have any real special skills. They come in, they, they will recruit people that have a regular driver's license and are able to step up to a microphone and tell a story about the city of Boston. There's a training program that goes on that is, that is paid. Chris had mentioned that, that the organization is certified to do CDL, Commercial Driver's License Training. So persons, our high school students, for example, or older persons like myself who have had a career and are looking for something else to do in retirement, can step into these jobs. These are good jobs, pay well, nice tips, as Chris mentioned. You know, we can work during the, the tourist season of, of our, of our warm weather months. And then by October or so, it's time for the tourists to, to not come to Boston, and we can take a layoff during the winter and relax and recharge our batteries. This is a good organization that we're, that, that is before you this evening. This is an organization that will be good for the city, and will be good for, for the, this will be good for them coming here, going into Panadose's old building that is, that will be upgraded. There will be no real major impact on the neighborhood. As Chris mentioned, you know, the, those bridges there at the MBTA bridges that oftentimes trucks get stuck underneath, well, that'll prevent anyone from going into the neighborhood in Ward, in Ward Two. We wouldn't be going that way anyway, we'd be going down Commercial Street. The flow, there was a questions that were asked about the, the flow of traffic of the, of the, of the trolleys. I'll tell you that it's in the morning when the conductors are given their assignment, the trolley, the conductors are given their assignments. We leave with these trolleys at eight-thirty in the morning, nine o'clock in the morning, and we start, we're heading into Boston. So for that, for that half hour period of time, the trolleys will leave, and you won't see those, we don't see many of those trolleys until later in the afternoon, five, six o'clock or so in the evening when they're returning. So the, the impact on the neighborhood, the impact of the flow of vehicles that are coming, coming to and from, will not adversely impact the neighborhood at all. So without going on any further, I would just tell you that I'm here to speak, obviously, strongly in support of, of this and recognizing the responsibility you have, but also recognizing this is an organization that is, that is good for the city of Malden. You know, we're not, we're not putting any, any major impact on our, on our neighborhood. We're not bringing more and more people in, into, into the area that will increase our, our school population or what have you. Good jobs, good organization, and I urge you to grant this petition before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Peg Crowe. I live at nine Hancock Street, and I'm the Ward One City Councilor. We always joke that you never want to go after Counselor Anderson, and now I remember why. And I'm going to add, I don't want to have to go after Chris either. But I'm here really in a hundred percent in support of this project. I think really bringing this established business to Malden, as the councilor had said, you know, really will, brings a lot, a lot of value to the city. I do believe that their plans for the location is a huge improvement. I visited the site, and we walked through, and all the projects they're going to do, upgrading electrical work and just, just a tremendous amount of work. I do believe that the, the way that the site plan takes them out onto Commercial Street and into Boston and comes back around, really does minimize like some, any traffic impact that we would have and any disruption of that traffic. And it's a logical layout for that property. I have seen the staff report, and, you know, it really does meet all the requirements for a special permit with even the parking spaces and the layout, the access, the stormwater, the landscaping, the snow storage. So I believe it is, you know, quality product and project, and obviously, a, a, a company that people believe in, including Counselor Anderson. You know, I am not an engineer, and I, I've heard about that, and I don't understand all the ADA compliance, so I'm not sure really sure how to address that situation. However, I do believe maybe having the petitioner contribute to either engineering services or funding to help address that intersection without having to take it on sort of themselves as a, as a local, just a local business, might be the common ground that we kind of need to address the situation, but not put it on an incoming company. So I do believe that, I hope you take that into consideration, and I urge you to support the special permit and bring them to Malden.
Counselor, one quick question.
Yes.
Are you aware, I, I know you work for, as director in the YWCA, are you aware of any funding programs that could help get this work done? If, if these proposed tenants aren't, aren't able to do it, are you aware of anything else that the state's offering or anyone's offering?
Well, I do think that, you, I mean, obviously, I am not an engineer, and I did hear the two hundred thousand dollars upwards to do that intersection. So I, you know, I'm sure there's still sort of infrastructure funds that come through the state. I think one of the things I might, I was thinking that if we can have them support some engineering, so we really have the plan, that we can shop out to make sure that we get the project complete. So if it is that they provide some of the engineering, so we know what needs to be done and what the cost estimates would be, and then be able to kind of take those, that plan, those engineering plans, and, and see where the funding can come to make sure that intersection gets correctly addressed.
Okay. I was just wondering if you happen to know in your role of grant writing and stuff like that, of other pockets of money that we, the city might be able to explore?
But I do believe, you know, there, we talk a lot about, a lot of infrastructure grants that are coming out through the state. And so it might be something we, we need to look at, but I think having the plans to be able to see where we can fund, find those funds and having that support, I think, would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
No.
Seeing no one else that would like to speak in favor, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Michelle, anything to read in opposition?
No.
No.
Seeing in here and no one in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report, please?
Yes, so this is the planning report and recommendation dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, for one twenty-nine Commercial Street. I won't re-verbatim into the record, but it's incorporated here and by reference into the record of this hearing. So we heard about the proposal. Won't go through this, I've given you the breakdown. This breakdown was shown on the first floor and second floor, the areas and the square footage. I will note, I think they're more approximate. It was brought to my attention that they don't add up to the totals that are on the plan, so I'm not really sure about that. So consider this approximate. Heard about the warehouse tenant use. I will note, when I reference removal of the portion of the building from the northwestern corner, that is actually the white freezer unit. You can see it in the pictures, but it is considered part of the structure. Also, there is a typo error on number three, this is on page one, which the proposed of the two overhead doors, the new locations, one is on the northern side, which is the Charles Street side. The other one should be on, say, eastern side. So it's the part of the building that diagonally faces the plaza across the street. That's eastern side, not western side. There is no overhead door proposed on the western side. Heard about removal of the loading docks, the one-way circulation pattern for trolleys. We've heard about access via Charles Street, egress via Commercial Street. Given you a breakdown or itemization of the plans and information that were filed or that was filed. You have copies of all these plans. On that note, I do want to note that you do have a set of plans that include site plan and layout plan, and there is some zone, excuse me, some drainage and stormwater management details in that plan. That's not the full stormwater management report, which was given to the city engineer. But you should see on the plan some of the improvements that they're planning to make in that area. Also want to note that since the writing of this report, another piece of information was submitted by the petitioner, and that is a memorandum dated September thirteenth, prepared by their traffic engineer. You, that was given to the city for peer review just today, and we will get to that in a minute. In terms of zoning, the property is located in the industrial two zoning district. The proposed warehouse use may be allowed by special permit in this district. The proposed vehicle repair, maintenance, washing, fueling, and offices will be accessory to the proposed principal warehouse use. And by principal, excuse me, accessory, our ordinance defines it to be a purpose supportive to a dependent upon the principal purpose of the building structure a lot. So there would never be a standalone car wash inside or motor vehicle repair shop or gas station or general offices. They all have to be accessory to this warehouse use. The property, this is just some history of the property, I won't go through that. The direct abut to the west is the active MBTA right-of-way with rapid transit, Orange Line commuter rail, Haverline, abut to the north on the other side of Charles Street, a medical center, doctors' offices to the east on the other side of Commercial Street, manufacturing in Plaza one eighty-eight with the supermarket, retail services, general offices, restaurant, medical center. And to the south on the other side of Adams Street is warehouse and wholesale distribution businesses. Surrounding land uses a residential to the west and business and industrial to the northeast and south. In terms of dimensional controls, the property conforms to all dimensional controls for the proposed warehouse use and the previous manufacturing use. I will note the railyard setback is waived because the property evads the railroad rapid transit right-of-way. In terms of parking requirements, fifty-two parking spaces are required for the square footage, entire square footage of the building. That, again, is for the warehouse use, one space per thousand square feet across floor area. Two parking areas are proposed. I've described them here, they're shown on the plans, I'm not going to read all this into the record. There's a northern parking area with access egress via Charles Street, and there's a southern parking area with access egress via Commercial Street. Oh, at this time, I think I will bring this up. So they did provide the parking that's required under the zoning ordinance. The city peer reviewer did note in one of his reports, the one that you have, a copy of that's dated September seventh, twenty twenty-three. He did note that he had requested that the petitioner provide the maximum number of employees that will be onsite at any one time, assuming a similar level of public transportation utilization, thirty percent, to demonstrate that part, remaining parking sufficient to accommodate the parking requirements for the project. I don't believe that information has been provided, but that concern was raised. Terms of the parking layout, everything appears to be conforming. The bicycle parking, we talked about, it's being recommended that it be interior, it's proposed to be outside at this point. Landscaping, snow storage, trash. They did talk to you about the dumpster. So the proposed dumpster location does not comply with the siting requirements. It does comply with the visual screening requirements. So this new violation may be allowed by special permit by this board, since it is a reuse of an existing building. Loading requirements, two existing loading bays provided as required. So traffic impact, so the first report is dated September seventh, twenty twenty-three, prepared by Jeffrey Dirk, the city peer reviewer for this project. He is present, so if we have any questions, he would be able to help us with those. The following, so that was the first report dated September seventh. There is another report that was just received today, September thirteenth. You also have a copy of that. So I'm going to quickly run through this. The following were recommended in the September seventh report. This is traffic and safety mitigation for the petitioner. One is to perform a comparative assessment to document the traffic volume differential between the July twenty, twenty-three traffic count that forms the basis of the August assessment and data when schools are in regular session. To the extent it's determined that the collected traffic volumes are lower than those when schools are in session, the twenty, July twenty-three volumes should be adjusted upward accordingly. The report that we received from the petitioner today, September thirteenth, provided that information. It gave the comparative assessment, and the city peer reviewer for this project did have a chance to review it. And in his report received today, September thirteenth, although I will note in the package, both of the reports are dated September seventh, but one should have today's date. One was September seventh, one is September thirteenth. The September thirteenth, the peer reviewer confirms that that information was provided, and it's satisfactory. So one has been addressed. Two, the second recommendation of the peer reviewers, to implement a transportation demand management program that includes the following. One, designate an onsite transportation coordinator to provide TDM information to employees, building tenants, including a tenant manual with info on public transportation routes and schedules, area bicycle share, area car share, onsite parking, bicycle parking, parking policies, set amenities. Two, offer a guaranteed ride home program at no cost to employees that arrive to the project site using an alternate mode of transportation to a single occupancy vehicle at least three times per week, and that register with the transportation coordinator. And then, three, provide employees with a transit pass subsidy, at least fifty percent of the cost of a Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority MBTA monthly link pass. And then, four, provide a bicycle storage room or similar weather-protected bicycle parking within the building. The third recommendation was The third recommendation was to make the following improvements at the Commercial Street-Church Street intersection. Evaluate the yellow and all red clearance intervals and the pedestrian phase timings and adjust as necessary to meet current design standards. Second part, so that was part A. Part B is to upgrade, repair, or replace the pedestrian push-button signs, saddles necessary to meet American with Disabilities Act requirements. And then, part C, reconstruct the wheelchair ramps on the corners of the intersection to meet ADA requirements. Do you want me to finish going through these, or do you want to?
Yes, please.
Okay. So then, four, the fourth recommendation was to revise the site plan to include the following. Addition of stop signs and stop lines on the project site driveways. Add a note stating that all signs and pavement markings to be installed within the project site shall conform to the applicable, excuse me, specifications of the manual and uniform traffic control devices. And then, part C is to show site triangle areas for the project site drivers and the site plans, along with a note to indicate signs, landscaping, and other features located within site triangle areas shall be designed, installed, and maintained so as not to exceed two and a half feet in height, snow accumulation windows located within site triangle areas that exceed three and a half feet in height, or that would otherwise inhibit sight lines that shall be promptly removed. Five, provide an interior bicycle storage room or otherwise secure bicycle parking within the facility. Six, subject to the approval of the Traffic Commission, install no stopping any time signs along the project site frontage on Commercial Street. And then, seven, provide, we already went through seven, that was to provide information on employees to determine if parking was sufficient. Other areas, stormwater management, interior washing. We did submit the stormwater management report, as well as the plans, which show the stormwater management and also the interior washing to the city engineer. He did not return any comments on those to us. I understand the petitioner has stated that he's spoken with the city engineer. I did not receive anything in writing. I've asked for comments in writing to present to the board, did not receive anything. In terms of the interior fueling station, fuel storage, and parking of trolleys, so that would be parking of cars inside a building, you know, with fuel in the tanks, that proposal, part of the proposal is under review by the fire chief. I did also send the plans and everything to the fire chief, asking him to look at those. He did get back to me a couple weeks ago, stating he was waiting to hear from the fire marshal, but I did follow up and have not heard back from him. So we don't have any comments yet, I don't know if he's completed his review, or if he's approved the proposal. I did, again, note that I would present any comments or recommendations he gave to you tonight. Do you want me to continue? So findings required to grant special permit. For you to grant the special permit, you would need to find any creation or increase in violations of dimensional controls or parking requirements will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Two, that the traffic and traffic patterns generated by the proposed use will not adversely impact any of the surrounding streets or create a traffic safety hazard. And three, that the proposed use will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Four, that the proposed use is not in conflict with surrounding land uses. And five, that the proposed use is in the interest of the common good. I will note, in terms of parking requirements, the dumpster sighting location is considered a parking requirement, which it's in our ordinance under parking and loading. Do you want to move forward with the recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, so this is prepared prior to the public hearing and only provided the board makes the required findings. So the recommendation is that a special permit be granted subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans except and unless modified by these conditions. Two, vehicle.
On that one, Michelle, they're saying that the plans aren't final, that they weren't sure where things were going to be located, is that going to be a problem?
Well, it could be a problem. So what we should do then is itemize, I thought the plans were fairly final, but we did, you're right, we did hear that they're not finalized. So you could note any specific thing that you want to mention, I would, you know.
What would you recommend, the wording be?
Modifications, I mean, when I looked at the plans, I looked at where the wash, where the entrance was, where the fueling, where the washing station was, where the fueling station was, where the maintenance was, you know, because that all related to doors and access and egress, where they're putting the new three doors, so there were certain things I think shouldn't change, also the location of the tenant space. To me, those should be considered fairly permanent, at least I consider them fairly permanent. So, I mean, there can be minor modifications of the floor plans, but I would say, except location of access egress, trolley wash, fueling station, maintenance area, trolley parking, so, I mean, I think it's basically, I'm not sure how it would work if the fueling station were in another area, or the maintenance were in another area, haven't seen that plan, so I'm not sure. I guess I would say minor modifications excluding the locations of all those elements. But I'm not sure we understood correctly. Are those going to change? I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I don't know either.
I heard the plans weren't final, that's what I heard. So we'll need clarification on that. Okay, next one?
So two, vehicle repair and maintenance, fueling and washing may only be accessory to the warehouse use. What I did not put in here, and this is, you know, just for your reference, I didn't put in that this is specific to trolley company. So, you know, if it were another type of company that had vehicles, this could potentially be applicable to them, okay? Just so that you know, unless you want to put that in. Three, use and occupancy, now again, I used what was put on the plans, but now I'm thinking it should state twelve thousand square feet. Use and occupancy of twelve thousand square feet of the first floor and thirteen hundred square feet of the second floor may only be for warehouse. Any other use shall require an amendment of the special permit. So we heard them say they've had other tenants approach them, and they didn't think they were good fits. If they were to find a tenant that is, they think is a good fit, and it's not a warehouse use, they would just need to come back in and seek to amend the permit. That probably would require additional traffic study as well. So change those numbers in three. Four, maintain one-way circulation pattern for trolleys, access via Charles Street, egress via Commercial Street. I'm not sure if it's worth it to say install signage, or if this is, you know, the building is being designed that way, there's going to be one way in and one way out. So I didn't add the signage, but I'll mention that if you want to. Five, interior refueling and fuel storage may only be done with the approval of the Malden Fire Department. What that's intended to mean is if the fire department does not approve this, approve this, it can't be done. So not sure if that's clear enough for you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Six, petitioner shall implement the following traffic and safety mitigation. These, again, were taken out of the city peer review report. So A is, has been done, so I'm going to eliminate A. That is not necessary. B, implement a transportation demand management program that includes designate on, so that's, that becomes A now. So A one, subsection one, is designate onsite transportation coordinator to provide TDM information to employees and building tenants, including tenant manual with info on public transportation routes and schedules, area bicycle share, area car share, onsite bicycle parking, parking policies, set amenities. A two will be offer a guaranteed ride home program at no cost to employees that arrive to the project site using an alternate, alternative mode of transportation to a single occupancy vehicle at least three times per week, and that register with the transportation coordinator. And then, part three is provide employees with a transit pass subsidy, at least fifty percent of the cost of a Massachusetts Bay Transportation MBTA monthly link pass.
I think we should add to that for any employees at the Commercial Street facility.
Okay. Provide employees of Commercial Street facility with the transit pass, so the rest of it. I will comment, I heard the explanation about bus passes and T-passes being different, but I read this to be, if it's a bus pass, it would be fifty percent of the bus pass, if it's a T-pass, they're providing fifty percent of the T-pass.
Right, and that's what I would expect also.
Yeah, I didn't think it was a other thing, but so you, we added of Commercial Street facility. So you're talking about employees that work out of there?
Right.
Okay.
And that should significantly reduce the number that are going, from that, that which are going right out into the field to perform their jobs.
Okay, I guess my only question, concern is, phrased that way, I think they're all employees of Commercial Street if that's their new headquarters, right? So they're all going to have, maybe the check says.
That's not where they perform their duties.
Okay, so provide employees, okay.
Someone who's managing the sales effort in Park Square.
So maybe.
Isn't to be included, but the accounts payable person, if they take the train, should have access to that option.
So maybe provide employees who work at or out of Commercial Street, maybe that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think that would cover it? I don't want to say stationed at, but work at or out of, just so that we're clear. Okay. Does that cover what you want to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Only those people who travel to that facility and work at that facility each day.
So who work at or out of, okay. And then, the new C is now B. Make the following improvements at the Commercial Street-Church Street intersection. Part one, evaluate the yellow and all red clearance intervals and the pedestrian phase timings and adjust as necessary to meet current design standards. Part two is upgrade, repair, or replace the pedestrian push-button signs and saddles as necessary to meet Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. And part three is reconstruct the wheelchair ramps on the corners of the intersection to meet ADA requirements.
Right, and for those, I'd like to call upon our peer reviewer and see if Mr. Dirk, what your estimate of that activity might be. We've heard that just updating the wheelchair ramps is two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk, the Vanessa Associates, a city's peer review consultant. If I could just digress one minute back to the transit, I would suggest you need to strike reference to monthly link pass, that's a specific pass.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Right, so I think everything else you talked about is fine, you just need to eliminate that one thing, because then that gives you the flexibility to do the other things. The monthly link pass is, it's a defined pass that allows subway and bus utilization. So back to the chair's question, so as we've, you know, as we've looked at the recommendations as they relate to the intersection, I think just to take a really brief step back, the reason we've developed these recommendations is that is a high-crash intersection, not only demonstrated by the applicant's analysis, it's actually on the state's list as a high-crash location for the most recent reporting period. So Mastod and the registry of motor vehicles are all aware that this is a high-crash location within the city. The other thing of note is there was a pedestrian fatality at the intersection. So I am only mentioning that in terms of it, you heard from the applicant, you know, they run a very good business there, and obviously they understand the operations of the business. As we are looking at offsite, we're taking into these other considerations that are not related to how they operate their business. However, what we don't want to have is a situation where they have good transit participation, but if for some reason it's not safe for those people to get the bus at that intersection, they may decide that they want to use a single occupancy automobile. We don't want that, and we want a safe intersection. So we've structured these recommendations, basically to talk about the first two items, which are just retime the traffic signal, and the areas we've asked them to focus in on are the yellow and all red clearance intervals, which are the safety parameters of the signal. Can I safely get through the signal if I can't stop on the red light? So if the yellows, it's turning yellow, it'll carry you through the intersection. And then the all red ensures, hopefully, that no one moves for a couple of seconds, so that everyone gets a chance, clear the intersection, look around, make sure there's no conflicts, and then the green light comes up. The standards to setting those timings have changed over the years as we've become more safety-conscious. So what we've asked the applicant to do in what is now B one, is to make sure those timings meet current standards for safety. We've also tied to that the pedestrian crossing times to make sure, again, that's a standard that's changed, and they've increased the amount of time for a pedestrian to cross the street. So we've asked them, again, as a part of B one, is to make sure that's all compliant. So we, you know, our opinion is that's a baseline thing, that should be done, just to make sure that their employees, because the bus stops are there, can safely get back and forth from the site as it relates to the signal. B two has to do with the push buttons, so there are ADA standards to make sure that a visually impaired person, that the push buttons are set up so that they actually can feel that they push the button, and it actually vibrates for them, so they know that it's been entered into the controller and that it's waiting for a call to come in. So that item there, we think should also be done, and it doesn't, that doesn't necessarily entail physical, you know, reconstruction of ramps and things like that. So as we looked at B one and two, it's trying to deal with those safety aspects. B three, I think, I don't necessarily disagree with the cost estimates. I think there is some speculation as to the amount of work beyond reconstructing the ramps that may need to take place, but I don't want to discount that. As you look at the intersection today, and you heard mention of this apex ramps, we're no longer allowed to create one ramp on each of the corners, and then just have it come out in the middle of the ramp, and then you can go and either crosswalk there. The current standards are you need one ramp for each crossing, which, so when you look at that intersection, instead of four ramps, you need eight ramps. And the eight ramps, to create that, you have to bring it back from the intersection. So it's a long way of saying there is substantial reconstruction of the intersection that would have to take place. So I don't disagree with what you heard from the applicant, that in terms of looking at the impacts of this project, the cost that is potentially associated with it is disproportionate to the impact of the project. However, I do agree with what the counselor was mentioning, which is there is an opportunity to have design plans prepared, so that then there are grant opportunities. Because this is a high-crash location, there is state monies that are available to address what's happening at the intersection. So there are multiple grant programs, it could be through the high-crash program, it could be through complete streets, it could be through a mask works grant or a tip program. So I think that in lieu of what B three is suggesting, maybe it's a suggestion that the applicant shall prepare detailed design plans and a construction cost estimate for the reconstruction of the wheelchair ramps and bringing the intersection up to ADA compliance, and that that be provided for the city, and then the city would have the opportunities to apply for grant application. Or if another applicant came along with a more impactful project, that's something that the planning board could say, we already have plans, so what we want you to do is build this stuff. So, sorry for taking a little bit of long.
No, 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 it's okay. This is good, because this seems to be a very strong sticking point for the petitioner, and we want to try to.
Right.
Do what we can to work with them. Now, what would you, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, what would you estimate developing an engineering plan might be? I mean, at the risk of saying, if they think it's going to cost two hundred to do four, do we do fifty for one corner?
It'd be something somewhere around the order of about twenty-five thousand dollars, it's not, it's not a large item like that, it's something that would be more reasonable to be able to say that. I think items one and two, I think, are something, you know, that should be done, just to make sure that the intersection's safe. It's not saying that they don't, that, it's not saying that the signal's not timed properly, it's saying go back and make sure it's timed properly, and if it's not, retime it. So I think that B one and two, I think, are not something that are significant cost the applicant. The design plans probably have a value of about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. Ken Tanucci, you had a question?
That was just what I was asking. That's just what I want to know, clarification, that this is for B one and two ballpark cost, I mean, that's, that's studying the signalization, having somebody come out and tweak it, that's a days, a couple of days' work.
Correct, and to get a contractor to do it is probably a few thousand dollars. It's more of a pain for a contractor than anything else to get someone to go out there and do it, but the engineering plans and everything, because it's a city signal versus a Mastod signal, it doesn't require a lot of effort, but you're right, it's really their engineer going out there, getting the information, working with the city from what's programmed into that controller, and then determining if it meets current standards, if not, coming up with a plan to make it meet the standards, and then hiring a contractor to go out there and just push the buttons in the controller to change the timing.
And you're saying, so that's for one and two? And you're saying, so that's for one and two, but three, again, ballpark, order of magnitude 25,000, to do the engineering only?
Yes.
No construction?
Correct, no construction costs on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I may interrupt you, but-
Nope, that's, that's perfectly fine, so I appreciate the opportunity to provide an explanation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Michelle, did you have anything more?
I had actually one more question, if I could. So could you just repeat that, please, Mr. Dirk? You said prepare detailed, I didn't catch it all.
Yeah, so, so I would say prepare detailed construction drawings and a cost estimate.
Detailed construction drawings and cost estimate to reconstruct the intersection to meet ADA requirements?
Yes, ADA requirements.
So you're calling them construction drawings and cost estimates, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'm sorry, Diane Chuha.
I just wanted to clarify that that, what you just said about preparing the engineering that was in lieu of either that or give $25,000, is that what you're, they give a monetary value of $25,000? So they can either do the plans or contribute $25,000 towards them, was that?
I think that would be up to the board. It's, it's really determination of how you think the $25,000 will be spent or how you would like that. In some instances, it's better just to say, "I want a product," rather than the money. There's other instances where you'd say, "We, the city, will take the money and then, you know, do something at that intersection or something else." It depends on how you see the money best being used, or if the feeling is it's better for us to have drawings. And the, the way I would kind of consider it is, if the drawings are going to sit on the shelf and they're not going to be used, they have an age to them. And then, you know, if it's, if you come back five years and say, "Oh, we have these drawings," they may need to be redone, because the city may have repaved it. So I think you just need to consider, is it better to take the money now, and then the city can use it to do something? Or do we want the drawings, and the drawings would be beneficial only if you know you're going to pursue something in the near term?
Okay.
Pat Hayes.
I just want to point out the unfair burden that we're placing on this proponent with this ask, knowing that the folks that own the piece of property, you know, on the opposite corner, just spent millions of dollars renovating that entire lot, and they did nothing. So I, I just think it's an unfair burden that we're placing on these guys.
Thank you, Pat. Ken Intenucci?
Yeah, just another clarification between one, two, and three. One, we said would be fairly minimal, because that's the timing and evaluations.
Correct.
Two could actually, depending on what needs to be replaced, could be substantial. So would it be better to, say, provide these detailed construction, you know, drawings and cost estimates for B2 and 3?
It, it's just like in an old house, if you go down and open up your fuse box, and, and it's like, well, I got a mess. Anytime you have old signal equipment and old wiring, the same thing could happen. They could come in there, just try to do something, and all of a sudden, there's a short circuit. And it's like, okay, now we're replacing all the wiring. You know, so, you know, I think back to the point of, you know, of, you know, providing some fairness and parity to the applicants that come before you, that, that, that's a consideration. So it, it's something where, as you look at, you know, item B1, I would kind of view the retiming as a, as a baseline thing, that you want to make sure it's, it's safe. It's not a large amount of money. It benefits them as well for safety. As you look at, you know, two and three, three, if you just say that you quantify a dollar value and ask for it, you know, then that's done. Two is the only where, only place where, as you, as you just mentioned, you could end up with a, you, you could end up chasing your tail in it. The applicant legitimately come back and say, "Listen, I was only into this for push buttons. We tried to do it, and all of a sudden, we got into a mess." So, you know, it's a consideration. And again, it goes back to, you know, what's fair, and do you want to ask for money or for plans? And maybe, you know, two and three become a dollar value.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Diane Chuha.
Yeah, I'm leaning towards what Pat said. I do think it's an unfair burden on these people, because I, I never understood why we need, I know we need the money to help, but we do have infrastructure, we do have state grants that we can get.
Right.
I don't think it is fair to put it on one company to do that. So that does make me a little nervous, you know, making them do all three of them, as a matter of fact. Because even the first one, the cost of the engineer is going to be enough money to hurt them. Yeah, I just, I agree with Pat. I think it's an unfair burden to have any of these, these things in here, and I'd like to strike it if I could.
Okay, well, you'll have that opportunity if you make the motion. Anyone else have any questions for the petition, for the peer reviewer?
Yes, I have one other question. Do you want, could you just, you were here, listening to the employees, the number of employees. Do you have any comment or follow-up you can provide, since they, they didn't provide it directly to you, this addressing number seven of your recommendation about providing the number of employees to, to make sure it's, the parking's going to be sufficient?
Yes, so I think that, you know, again, we have, you have an applicant before you that understands this business extremely well. And I think that even as my, as I went through and did my own calculations of saying, you know, if you have a certain number of trolleys, and you're assuming that 30% of the people use public transportation, there's a certain number of vehicles that are going to be parked on the site associated with trolley operators, then you've got your office staff. And I think what you heard the applicant state tonight, I think is pretty close to even my calculations, where he was saying the maximum is 45 vehicles parked on the site. And I think that really runs in line with everything that, that I was kind of expecting. So I don't think I need any more information besides what the applicant provided or discussed tonight, because that is consistent with what my feelings would be on it. I think what it gets to is where you are going with trying to figure out, how do we deal with the 12,000 square feet of additional space that's there? Because what you're hearing is this is only of the 52 parking spaces. And to do the parking calculations, this has been called warehouse space, because that's the closest use that it can fit to. However, it's not really only to the extent that you look at it as a storage trolleys, but it, it's kind of some of a hybrid use. So if we use the 45 parking spaces as the peak demand, that leaves seven spaces. So I think it gets to, however you condition what can happen within that 12,000 spare, 12, 13,000 square feet of space that's left over, it's almost that the parking demands associated with whatever's going to go in there can't exceed seven. Because if they do, the site is underparked.
Okay, thank you.
Or overparked, I should say, underparked. So, you know, keeping it and saying it has to be warehouse use or it has to come back, I think probably is, is sufficient to deal with that. Or saying, whatever the use is, it can't have a demand that exceeds seven parking spaces.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Michelle, if you want to continue?
So, continuing on, so that was B. So now, the new C is to revise the site plan to include the following, the addition of stop signs and stop lines on the project site driveways. To add the note, all signs and pavement markings to be installed within the project site shall conform to the applicable specifications of the manual uniform traffic control devices. And then to show site triangle areas for the site drivers with the note, signs landscaping and other features located within site triangle areas shall be designed, installed, and maintained so as not to exceed 2.5 feet in height. Snow accumulation windows shall locate, located within site triangle areas that exceed 3.5 feet in height, or that would otherwise inhibit site plan shall be promptly removed. So the idea of adding these to the site plan, then the development as per plans, they would need to adhere to those additional requirements. So it's more than just adding to the site plan. They would then have to implement those as well, the pavement markings. So just calling that out for your attention. Then D, provide an interior bicycle storage room or secure area inside the building with parking for 12 bicycles. They've said they've agreed to do that. And then E, is subject to the approval of the Traffic Commission. Install no-stopping anytime signs along the site frontage on Commercial Street. They would work with the ward counselor to make that petition. And then, condition seven, install the, install proposed stormwater management system subject to modification and approval of city engineer. Like, suggest you leave that in, since we don't have his final comments, or any comments. And then I would also add eight, the dumpster location shall be as per plan. So you're allowing that non-conforming dumpster location.
Okay, so the only one left undone is, are the plans final, or how final are they? Is that correct? Or were you able to work up something on the plans and what the key items are?
No, I, I mean, as I said, my understanding of the, you know, plans are, these key items would remain as shown on the plan, and that's the only thing that is shown on the plan, so-
Right, but how do we, how do we define that?
I think it's defined by all development shall be as per plans.
Okay.
Except as modified by the conditions. So the washing station is going to be where the washing station is, the fuel storages, the parking is, the maintenance is, the tenant space, the parts room.
So them saying the plans weren't final isn't an issue, you think that it's all small and minor changes?
I don't have any idea what they meant when they said that. That's the first I've heard of it, so-
Excuse me, Mr. Compton, can you come up and give us some indication of how, how unfinished are the plans that were presented and reviewed as final?
So the, the plans are essentially 99%. The, the major elements that you're talking about are all fixed in place. There are minor little components that we haven't finished completely specking out, the egress travel distance, which is why that door is still being coordinated, because there's a ramp there, and we want to make sure we achieve the required path of travel. But all those major components that we're talking about, where the overhead doors are, where the fueling station is, the layout of the second floor, we may tweak, as Chris mentioned, a little bit, that demising wall between a potential another tenant space, but all those major elements shown in those plans are fixed, are not changing.
Okay, that's more helpful, thank you.
Sure.
So it sounds like, Michelle, that you're, the way you have it worded is fine. There will all be minor changes after that. Okay, so do you have anything else to add, Michelle?
No.
Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? If not, is there a motion? Ken Intenucci?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to grant the special permit with the modified conditions as discussed, the eight conditions, but two strike recommendations, six B2 and 3.
So leave B1 in about the timing?
Yep.
But strike B2 and B3?
Yes, for the aforementioned reasons.
Do you have that, Michelle?
Yes, I have granted special permit with eight conditions as modified, as discussed. And then, with the exception of six B is only section, it would only be six B1. That's the only condition that you're including.
Yes.
And the petitioner understands the changes that we've done, that we're proposing?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a second for Ken's motion? Stephanie Stone.
I'll second.
Stephanie Stone, second. Ken's motion to grant with eight conditions as modified during the discussion. Okay, give me a second, let me get people started. Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
So yes vote is to grant the special permit with eight conditions as modified. Ken Intenucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Tawadid Ghebresalassi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Ronnie Raj Verma?
Yes.
Chuck Ayovan?
Yes.
The petition's been granted with conditions. Good luck with it, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and we will, we will resume at 9:30. Thank you.
A lot. We got through, so we just finished number three. Yeah, so where, we just did this one.
So that one, that was a tabling, right?
Yeah, yep.
And you did this one, right?
Yeah, that's done. This one's done, yeah, so we have this number, yeah, number one. So, yeah, so they're allowed to, like, re-present, because they basically deleted that whole section in the back, so, you know, a lot more, you know. Yeah, I mean, I thought we chopped through this. I mean, this, yeah, oh yeah, I mean, yeah, it's only 9:30. Yeah. Yeah, we tabled, that one was a quick one, this one, I tabled, yeah, this one, I tabled, yeah. Yeah, we'll see how that goes. Yeah. At least, maybe we'll be up till midnight.
I'll do all that if you're ready.
It's only 9:30. Oh yeah, that was the old Granville, the new Granville.
So you just have to plug in, there should be a little dot there, that's what I'm telling them about your seat at the podium? Yeah. Yeah, why don't you do that, that way you can get started.
Yeah. 26, what's that? No, you just leave it, yeah. Yes. Very good. If you want to say, if you want to hear the other and participate, you're welcome to come back. If you don't... Whew, Lord, hard. Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, cruising. Really? I always feel warm. Take it easy, brother. I like that, that's pretty cool.
Okay, thank you very much. 9:30, we'll resume the hearing with zero Broadway, also known as 2:35 Broadway. Diane, if you could read the notice, that would be helpful, thank you. Oh, also, let the record reflect that Risa Gray joined the meeting at 8:15, and she will be participating in the, in the National Grid hearing. And Ken Intenucci will not be participating in the National, the National Grid hearing.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Council, two-fifteen Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass., at seven PM on Wednesday, September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, on the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, permit application number CMID zero-five-six-six-seven-six dash twenty-twenty-three, seeking a special permit under Title twelve, Chapter twenty-eight, Section zero-nine-zero of the Code of the City of Malden, to allow a utilities facility and substation structure, namely to construct a new control house containing two thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet, and to install and/or replace various substation-related equipment at the property known as and numbered zero Broadway, and also known as two-thirty-five Broadway, and by the city's assessor's parcel ID number one-five-three-five-zero-one-one-zero-two.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate that, and everyone seems to be back. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, good. If the petitioner is present, if he can introduce himself, name an address for the record, and then start with your presentation.
Excellent, so just, I want to do a quick sound check, everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent, so, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm an attorney with a law firm of Badich and Dewey, with an address of three-eleven Main Street, in Worcester. Here this evening, representing Massachusetts Electric Company in connection with the special permit request, as was mentioned at the outset. With me this evening are various representatives of the company who will be speaking in a moment. We do have a brief slide deck that we would like to run through to provide the board and the members of the public, sort of a high-level overview of the project, talk a little bit about the neighborhood, the existing conditions, and touch upon the project scope. And of course, answer any questions that the board and the public may have. So to kick things off, I'd like to introduce Rich Rennie, who's the project manager with respect to this project.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Richard Rennie. I am the National Grid Project Manager for the Maplewood Substation High or Protection Upgrade Project, which is being mandated by ISO New England for the reliability and protection of the system overall in this area. Let me go on to the first slide here. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of what the ultimate goal is of this project, and why it's a critical asset to delivering electricity to the community. As you can see, the United States is broken into three major regions where we define this as the grid. It's the western section, Texas, and then the eastern interconnection zone. These areas basically deliver power to both residential, commercial, you know, person, people across the United States. Further, these zones are broken into regional entities called independent system operators. The independent system operator that represents New England is called ISO New England, and we essentially, as National Grid, take our operating orders, the, basically the marketing of, you know, bringing electricity, you know, to the grid, and the overall looking down the road as to how the grid is going to be, you know, updated through a ten-year period. So the important thing here is, ISO New England basically provides direction to transmission distribution companies like National Grid to keep the grid safe, reliable, and keeping power available for all of personnel, or people in the United States. As you can see, Massachusetts, in twenty-twenty-two, passed the Clean Energy and Climate Plan for twenty-fifty. This represents a goal of Massachusetts to shift from fossil fuels over to electrifying, basically, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, because in the top graph you can see, we are essentially looking at increasing the electric demand in Massachusetts over the next, you know, until twenty-fifty, by, in some cases, two to three times in the summer peak demand, and sometimes up to four times during the winter demand. In order to do this, ISO New England has directed all of, you know, its basically companies such as Eversource, National Grid, so on and so forth, to provide updates, you know, to our electric substations, and to provide, in this case, protection which is more reliable, faster, and is going to prevent, basically, compromise by external activities. You've probably heard of, you know, things being hacked, and this older infrastructure that we are replacing is susceptible, and by upgrading this, we, again, increase that reliability and security. As far as ISO New England's direction has been to the National Grid, by September of twenty-twenty-five, we are required to upgrade the substation, which is the implementation of this new control house, which will be a fiber optic facility, as opposed to a older copper-based system. Fiber optics is obviously faster, it's more reliable, less likely to be compromised, and therefore, this is a key element in providing, keeping the grid for the entire interconnection zone of the United States more reliable. So that's a real quick overview of why we're being directed to do this. Who's being directed is all of these transmission distribution companies like National Grid. What substations are being upgraded are all throughout Massachusetts and throughout New England. In the, in the very near area, we have Wakefield Junction, Everett, we have municipalities like Wakefield Muni, GE Resco, we have Golden Hills and Saugus. All of these substations basically talk to each other for protection purposes, so that if they receive a fault, or the need to, you know, clear a fault, so that we maintain the integrity of the grid around it, they will respond quickly and minimize the amount of loss of power to the overall region. And, down the road, could be, you know, to the entire, you know, grid overall. So this is a very important and critical U.S. infrastructure ask by ISO New England of National Grid, and the Maplewood Substation here in Malden is a key element in that upgrade project. Maplewood, on, you know, as, primary job is to provide, you know, the city with power. We basically take in a hundred-and-fifteen thousand volts, convert it to four thousand volts, and then send it out through the city so that, you know, the residents and, you know, commercial entities can have power. As part of this project, we will be putting in a new control house, this fiber optic control house, which will, you know, before we go out here. Can you do that? So again, you know, Maplewood talks to all of these other substations from a protection standpoint, increasing the reliability, and it's very important that we finish this project by the implementation date, or else we basically have a, you know, not only, you know, the Maplewood Substation, but all the substations that are connected to it cannot basically go to the fiber optic system. That basically leaves a hole, you know, here in the Massachusetts area, and it's why we're, you know, working very diligently to, you know, get this project going and meet that, you know, twenty-twenty-five deadline. That summarizes the overall need for the project. Thank you. One-seven-zero, Data Drive, Waltham, Mass.
Thank you very much. Yes, and you should sign the, sir, sign the clipboard?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
I did, thank you. Thank you, Rich. So we'll, we'll get right into the site itself, and, as I said before, touch upon some of the high-level project components. So this is an existing aerial of the site, this is an unmanned substation, as Rich had described. This substation has been in existence since about the nineteen-fifties, so it's been in operation for decades. The property itself is little over two acres in size, this particular parcel, and is located within the industrial one zoning district. The property is surrounded by a mix of different types of businesses, including a doggy daycare, restaurant, there's an auto body on the, on the left side, which is the westerly side. On the north and northeasterly sides, you can see, are some of the residential properties that are located adjacent to the property. Again, this is, it's within the, in one of the city's industrial zoning districts, and it's an unmanned substation. Access to the site is from Broadway, on the lower-left corner there, as you can see on your screen, and you enter the site from that point. This is just a bulleted list of some of the high-level components of, of the project, and I'll get into more detail on this next slide here. So again, on the upper portion of this, of this particular slide, or the northerly portion of the site, you can see the control building, or the control house that Rich had mentioned. That's one of the primary project improvements that are part of this project's scope. It's about a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot building that's proposed. In addition to that, to the right, there's also a service transformer that is also proposed to be installed. Other components of the project, again, high-level, include the installation of a security fence. So currently, right now, there's a sort of National Grid standard security fence that encloses the property, and ranges in height to as tall as ten feet, including barbed wire. The expansion portion of the substation site, which, that expansion portion in that northerly portion, is about ninety-seven-hundred square feet. So additional, the addition of crushed stone will be added to that area in order to accommodate these new project improvements. Also, the substation security fence will be expanded to encompass this new expansion substation, of the substation yard. This new expanded substation security fence will be the standard eight feet plus one foot of barbed wire, so a total of nine feet in height with respect to that security fence. Outside of the security fence, or just beyond the security, security fence, the company is also proposing to install some additional screening fencing along the northerly portion, or the upperly portion, the upper portion of, of the site, and the northeasterly portion of the site. Those are the two, two areas where you have the residential abutters. And the company's been in pretty constant communication with the residential abutters about this project, they acknowledge that it's a sensitive area, given that it's, it's in their backyards. So the company is proposing, and I'll get to it in a moment, various options for the screening fencing. But I just want to sort of give you that layout of the expansion of the yard, expansion of the security fencing, again, which will be nine feet in height, included, inclusive of the barbed wire, and then beyond that will be additional screening fencing that will be installed. In addition to that, there's also going to be a retaining wall that's going to be installed that will also range in height, be as high as five feet in height, and other sort of standard electric substation-related equipment that'll be added. I'm just gonna run, run through this quickly to the extent that, that folks may not be as familiar with the site. So on, on the left is sort of the vantage point arrow, the perspective. So this is looking at the site, sort of the middle portion of the site, from the westerly side looking east, and on, on the photograph, you can see there's a temporary, that's a temporary security fence. That temporary security fence is, is pretty much in line where, where the previous permanent fence used to be, permanent security fence, and then beyond that, which is now grass, is where the expansion, where the, where the expansion substation yard will be located. This is a depiction from the east looking west, and this large grassy area is essentially the project area. You can see a couple of stakes there, those indicate approximately where the control building is going to be located. Another depiction, again, looking more into that north-westernly corner of the site, and you can see that there is some fencing there, that's existing there now. This is a more direct view of the northerly lot line. And then, and then another depiction of another residential abutter in the northeasterly portion of, of the site. This particular view is pretty much looking from the neighbor's lot line into what is the current view of the substation today. And this is a more close-up depiction of one of the residential abutters, and there's, there's an existing, it's approximately twelve-foot-tall fence. And here's another depiction of that, that similar area. So getting into the options with respect to the, this is the aesthetic fencing, the screening fencing, again, that would be beyond the chain-linked security fencing. So, and again, they would be along the northerly side of the lot line, and the northeasterly side, again, where the residential abutters are located. So this is one example of, of a, of a screening fence. The type of screening fence is a vinyl composite type of fencing, very high-quality, very durable, with a manufacturer warranty, a long, long-term manufacturing warranty. This particular type of fencing ranges in height between six feet to eight feet. And I believe this is, this type of, particular type of fencing is, is called Allegheny, option A. Option B, this is another type of fencing, I believe this might be the Sherwood fencing, just another style, again, this comes in height ranging from six feet to eight feet. And then lastly, this is yet another example. And again, all of these examples, or all of these types of fencing, they, they're all vinyl composite with, with galvanized steel. These are some depictions of sample control buildings, just so you get a sense of the type of building that's going to be installed. It, it's, looks like a sort of glorified metal shed, but that's, that's essentially the building, the way it will, it'll have a similar look and feel. On the left is, that might be Nantucket, and on the right is, obviously, this is the, the building being manufactured in a warehouse. And with that, I'm gonna pass it over back to Rich.
We wanted to discuss the current encroachments on the substation property.
Excuse me, before you go there, can you just clarify something for me? You mentioned two things were going to be built, but I only keep seeing the where, the houses, the, the house portion. What's the other thing with the, with the concrete slab?
If you look, if you look directly to the right of the orange control house, you'll see a small square in the remaining area. That is a pad on which a transformer will be positioned.
And what's, do the transformers look like, the other big pieces of equipment?
It's actually a small version that is one-hundred-and-fifty kilowatts, which is approximately eight feet high, six feet square, and in this case, this particular modern transformer has no fans like the current models that are on the substation. We're also replacing what is called the T-four transformer in the center of the current substation with a new- in the center of the current substation with a new, modern version of that. It's reached, it's basically, it's a useful lifespan.
So, will this new, I was on the assumption as I was, as I was reviewing things, that the new control house will then work with the existing transformers?
Again, the control-
Is that true or not?
It will control the breakers that turn on and off these transformers by the, basically, the regional control center that manages all the operation of all the substations. But the control house, again, is mainly where the equipment inside the substation communicates, figures out whether there is normal operation, or whether something is going wrong and needs correction. So, the control house is really both an operational location for, you know, basically turning, opening and shutting these large breakers as if you were turning it off on a switch. It also houses all the relaying, this fiber-optic relaying that is used for communicating not only with the pieces of equipment in the substation, but also with the connected substations to, you know, Maplewood Substation.
So, when that is installed and working, will the copper wire housing at the other side of the lot no longer be necessary?
The intention is ultimately for that control house to go away. It will not be part of this project. Basically, we want to ensure that both systems operate correctly at the same time, and therefore, there will be a period of time that both systems will be in operation. But ultimately, in September of, of, of basically 2025, it will, the whole region will shift to fiber optics, and, you know, that will start the clock ticking on potentially removing that old control house.
On decommissioning that one.
Right.
But it wouldn't impact any of the other transformers that, I, I saw down there?
We, currently, we are replacing the T4 transformer, which is one of the big, huge transformers that goes from 115,000 volts down to the 13,000-volt range, which is what we send out basically across the city. So, that transformer is aged out and is being replaced. And then we're putting in this new transformer to add additional capability to the site.
Okay, thank you.
There'll be, there'll be a breaker that's replaced as well, that helps control those things.
Okay, thank you.
So, from an encroachment standpoint, again, some of these encroachments are longstanding, and so we're listing them here so that we can talk about potentially, you know, what we're going to, at this point, you know, do with those encroachments. Start with the bottom section of the, uh... Sorry, I got the arrow there, but there's a doggy daycare in that corner. That section of their outdoor facility where they keep the dogs is rented from National Grid to the doggy, the doggy daycare. So, no issues with that, we have an agreement with them for the continued use of that area. Up, moving a little bit north here, you have the auto body shop. The auto body shop has essentially two encroachments. One is they had, at some point, knocked out a wall in their, back of their auto body shop and extended out kind of a, basically a raised area outside of their building, which hangs over into the substation yard, and they put a compressor in there for air use inside the, the area. And then up in the, kind of, top of that, basically up in this corner where the cars are, you can see the black line here is the property line. There is a Connex box where they store parts. There's a second Connex box where they, kind of, look like they throw away things, and then there's a dumpster. Those are all, right now, basically parked right up against the current security fence. So, we are having them move that back across the line so that somebody can't jump on the Connex box and basically jump into the substation and get hurt. That's typically the issue of people coming into steel copper and things, you know, where they get access. So, we're moving that, all of that auto body shop equipment and cars back on their side of the, basically, the, the property line. We have a agreement to sign a lease with the auto body shop owner, who is leasing that property from another, from the owner. That will go in effect once they move all their things. Moving up a little bit further is another auto body shop up in the top corner. We, we, basically, they just are over the property line, and we have no intention to do anything there. Then you, oops. Then we move along the top of the northern section of going into the residential areas, and this is gonna be 11 Coleman Street and 13 Coleman Street. They are the diagonal properties. Basically, there, they have a chain-linked fence that is beyond our security fence. About seven feet of that area is National Grid property, and we have no intention to do anything with that either. So, we're leaving that.
What does your risk team think about all these encroachments on your property near a transformer?
Again, in between, they are basically on the other side of both their screening fence, what's going to be the buffer zone, the 10-foot buffer zone, and then the security fence, basically, into the substation proper. Right now, they are nowhere near the, the security fence that basically goes across the middle of the property, so there's no danger of them basically, you know, being in the substation itself. So, you know, that is why, you know, as part of this project and reaching out to the neighbors and things, you know, we feel it's in our best interest to allow them to use the backyards and such that, you know, have been part of that, kind of, longstanding encroachment. Does that make, does that make sense?
It doesn't make sense, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Then we move down to 23 Coleman Street. They have a, you saw the picture of the wooden, about 12-foot wooden structure screening their pool. Again, that is right at the, basically where that fence is. We own three feet past that, you know, basically, and again, we're not gonna do anything with that at this time. Moving further down that 23 Coleman property, there's a foundation that was put in for a removed hot tub at this point. They also have some landscaping, and they, the, the one key element here is there's a patio extension of pavers that have gone over the top of an existing drainage, drainage system from the 1960s and has stopped that drainage system from working. When we met initially with the owners in, in that area of the yard, that was one of their concerns. We have designed a refurbishment of that drainage system, which will be talked about a little bit later. And that basically starts right about where the pool is and moves down the property line to a new basin, which has always emptied out into the city drainage system for the street. So, again, our intent is to take that responsibility on to refurbish the drainage system that was covered over. That will require moving that, those pavers out of that area and removing about half of that foundation for the hot tub that's on National Grid property to reestablish that drainage. Again, same thing there, there'll be the screening fence, the 10-foot buffer, which will contain basically a shallow drainage trench, and then the security fence. So, again, no issue with, you know, having, you know, people get into the substation or anything like that through the security fence. And then, the last, basically, encroachment is, I can't get the number right here, 29 Coleman, which is basically the next house has, as part of that drainage system, there was essentially a U-shaped cement cistern, which basically funneled the water towards the back. There are a, a number of fences that have, wooden fences that have just been, like, put in that cistern, and at the end of it, there are some other wooden fences that have been put into the ground. Those will be removed as part of the drainage trench refurbishment. Now, we're gonna talk about the, the actual drainage system itself, upgrade.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name's Chris Einuzi, I'm a project manager at Benas Hang in Brussels, and I am the design civil engineer for the project. Good evening tonight. I'd like to go over briefly what we just discussed about the drainage. When the substation was constructed in the 50s, there was a swale that was constructed basically from the northerly property line south to the existing city of Malden Easement. Over time, that drainage swale has been either filled, modified, or covered so that it's now non-functional, and there has been evidence of extreme flooding in that area, so much that someone had installed a sump pump to try and drain the area. So, we're going ahead and restore that area, we're gonna restore that swale to the northern property line, which, which actually drains quite a bit of that area, not just our site per se. It does drain the backyards of those residential properties, as well as the properties on the east side along Coleman. So, we're gonna restore that. In addition, we will be constructing a water quality basin in conformance with the Mass DEP stormwater standards, and that basin will include some clearing of the vegetation in that area. You can see it on the screen right in front of you. On the west side of that basin will be the screening fence, and beyond, about eight feet beyond that will be the existing security fence. So, that's the extent of the stormwater improvements for the project. And I'd be happy to ask, entertain any questions you might have regarding that.
Yeah, a couple of questions if I could.
Yep.
Did that swale fill in naturally, or did someone fill it in?
I personally can't definitively say how it was-
So, it wasn't silt and other things that, over the years, clogged it up?
No.
Or was it someone filled it in?
It was filled, it was filled, and, um...
And, and how did National Grid not know it?
I'm sorry?
How did National Grid not know it, if it's flooding to the extent that you're saying?
I, I think that, that the property, over the years, was not manned, and that area that was being developed was not maintained, so to speak. And, you know, out of sight, out of mind, someone came along and filled that area in and developed a quite nice backyard along with it. But I will tell you that, in doing so, they caused a ponding issue on the site, and there is a something there right now with evidence of piping to alleviate that ponding, and that wasn't put in there naturally.
Okay, 'cause I, I, so was there any-
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, is there any opportunity for the water that would collect there to damage the closest transformers?
There will not be.
No, it's there now, if nothing has changed. How bad does it flood? Do you know?
I don't have firsthand-
Okay.
...knowledge of that, but I, I do know it's-
You might not know, I'm just curious, I'm sitting here listening.
The current substation is up on pay, or up on crushed stone, and there is no area that-
Right.
-has any impact from that flood area in the current substation.
So, it's a remote part of the lot?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Substation acts sort of like a dam because it's higher grade, and it causes, you know, that little spot in the area.
Okay, thank you, sorry for interrupting.
So, members of the board, that, that concludes our, our formal presentation. I just want to make note that we, we are in receipt of the staff memorandum that was prepared by Michelle Romero dated September 13th, 2023. We are in agreement with this memo, with the one exception of the planning recommendations, item number five, which provides that remove all encroaching uses and structures, install fencing along property lines to prohibit encroachments. The reason for that has, has been pretty much explained by Rich Rennie with respect to those encroachments. We don't feel that that's necessary. It's a safe and secure site with the encroachments, the, to, to the extent that they do not interfere with the project. So, we, we would respectfully request that that item be removed.
And how many have you monetized? You monetized the doggy daycare? And it sounds like you're trying to monetize at least one of the auto body shops. Is that correct?
Monetize-
You're charging them leasing for encroaching on your land?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Is there any intention to set up agreements with the other auto body and some of the residences?
The company has made efforts, and they continue to make efforts with respect to entering into some type of a, an encroachment agreement with other, other abutters who are not currently under agreement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for the petitioner? I have a question for Michelle at some point, but it- Yeah. Well, why don't I ask my question first? Michelle, what is the setback between the lot line and the security fences from the city's perspective? Is there anything that they should have a, a certain amount of setback?
Well, it's, it's my understanding that the, you, you're saying the security fence is not the screening fences?
Yes.
Because there's two sets of fences.
Well, there's the fencing that I'm calling the security fencing-
Right.
-that surrounds the transformers and the houses. Then there's the lot lines, that some of them are being encroached. Do we have, excuse me, city ordinance for a utility that says between the lot line and the security fence, there needs to be 10 feet, or 15 feet, or 20 feet?
Well, yes, and I, I did speak with the building commissioner about this. He's also here tonight, so you may need to ask him for more details. But my understanding is the fences beyond a certain height, so beyond six feet, are gonna be considered structures. The ordinance does provide that, for these utilities, which are above-ground utilities, they provide the minimum yard dimensions, front, side, and rear, and the height. So, the setbacks, right, are equal to the full height of the highest structure as measured from the lowest part of the base to the highest part of the structure. So, I was told that that's 15 feet. So, that is what my understanding is. So, we do have an ordinance that regulates the yard setbacks for these, and it would be 15 feet.
Around all of them, so-
Right.
Should this be as easy as going and measuring between the security fence and the lot line and see if these encroaching properties?
Well, the encroachment, this is, this is going to, from the structure to the property line, not to an encroachment. So, it's measuring, you, you start measuring at the property line, not at the encroachment.
Right.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, should we be able to say, here's the equipment, the electrical equipment, with a fence around it?
Right.
And then measure from there to the lot line?
Right.
And anyone that is within that area needs to be removed? Is it that simple, or am I oversimplifying?
They, they did show the setback on the plan, and it's showing the 15-foot setback all around the perimeter. So, you can see on the plan what is within that 15 feet.
Okay.
Right, so you can see all the structures, there's buildings, there's yard, there's other things, there's residential business, there's different uses going on in that area.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't think I'm articulating it well enough. We should be able to go in and go in with a marker and say, these things are within the area, ma, make them go away.
Right, these, these things are on their property, so even if there wasn't a setback, it's on their property. That's what the encroachment is. Some of them go beyond the 15 feet. Some of them go beyond the 15 feet, if that's what you're asking.
No.
Okay.
I'll take another stab at it later. Reese Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you, uh, point out on the plan where the, um, the, the screening fence and the security fence, uh, fences are and the extent of the screening fence?
Sure, I have to do, um, so the, let's start with the security fence. The security fence is essentially on the 15-foot setback line, okay? That's that, um, I think it has, I, my, my eyesight's not as good as it used to be, but I think it has square blocks. And then the out, fence beyond that outside is the one with the circular dots. That is the screen fence. And that runs on the northerly boundary along, it's interesting to say, that, along the existing chain link fence, which is actually seven feet inside our property. So we're maintaining that encroachment. But on the east side, uh, we're running that security fence almost entirely to the, against the property line. And then along the easterly side, you can see it jogged down on the easterly side, almost to the drainage easement of the city. And you can see it terminate there. Um, there's actually a call out that says, "End, uh, screen fence."
And how does it work?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I don't have a laser pointer or anything.
I got the pointer down. If you see this very thick...
I got it. Let me take care of it. So, yeah, we keep moving each other.
So the very thick, black, and staggered line is the security fence line?
Right, right where I'm, I like this thing, I'll tell you. Right about there. That's the security fence. Just above that is the screen fence.
There'll be a 10-foot buffer zone, and then the screening fence will be, um, located at that 10-foot point.
And the screening fence doesn't go all the way around, it terminates at...
It basically encompasses all of the residential properties.
Correct.
From the, from the northeast top left corner, all the way across the northern upper section, and then down the eastern section are all the residential areas. And it will be in front of all of those residential areas.
And does it just terminate in, as an open end?
There's basically nothing down in that bottom section...
Yeah.
...except the vegetative area.
Okay, and the heights, you said that the, the screening fence is six to eight feet, it varies, and the security fence is 10, is nine feet?
The requirement is not essentially to go over seven, but our discussions that we could go up to eight, which would give a better screening for the residences, could be resolved here. So we're willing to go to the eight feet, um, if, if we get the approval of the board.
Thank you.
You all set, Reese?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a quick question. So is, is substation 16, is this a, a bulk electric asset, bulk electric station?
Uh, we're not allowed to...
Uh, forgive me.
Sorry.
Forgive me. I work for EverSource, I'm sorry. Uh, so I, let me just, let me, let me phrase, let me phrase this another way. In accordance with FERC, NERC, and NPCC, and, and I, I saw it in New England, where your security fences are and your perimeter fences are, they are compliant with what, uh, with those, with those, the, the guidelines that...
That is correct. And this fence, and the existing security fence, which was just replaced last, two years ago, is the new, uh, type of fence with the one-inch squares, uh, plastic salt, so that makes it harder for people to cut through them. And they also have grounding grids, uh, so they extend into the ground, uh, the security fence does, and there's grounding grids, uh, that are, uh, part of that fencing to prevent any kind of, uh, issue with, uh, personnel getting shocked or anything. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was, also, just a question. You, you printed in the slide about your, your loading, was that for, for a mass electric company in, 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 in general, or was that for that substation?
I'm sorry?
Can you say that again, slide?
It, it was one of the earlier slides, uh, that had the 12,000, uh, 1,200 megawatt range and the, and 3,000 megawatt range. Hey, that's the one, that's a pretty one.
No, the, the next one.
Yeah. So is, this is, is this, you...
That's mass electric.
Mass electric, so, so for mass electric, where you're still a winter peaking at that substation, or that's for the...
This is across Massachusetts.
Ah, all right, thank you. You said you would change some transformers, I was just curious about...
Uh, one of the transformers, uh, as I said, it has aged out, is being replaced for that. And then the, the second transformer is to add capacity, capabilities to substation for, for Malden.
As you go to fiber, is this, uh, you, that's why you're new, constructing a new control house there?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And this is going to be a manned, uh, controlled house, or...
No, it is not, it is still unmanned.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the petitioner? Stephanie?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, does the new control house or transformer increase the noise levels for the residents?
It does not. Uh, the new, uh, T4 transformer, which is replacing the aging transformer, will, uh, drop the sound level from approximately 81 decibels with the fans running, uh, down to 63. So it's a pretty marked decrease. The, uh, new transformer that's being installed is 150 kilovolts. Um, that has a 55 decibel, uh, um, from the manufacturer, uh, rating. Um, and again, that is just above a conversation level.
Okay. Does the newer technology represent any increased safety risk if someone were to seemingly get through, even though these, the fence sounds pretty substantial?
Uh, again, I'll answer this in two parts. One is, the fence, um, as I've heard a couple people say, um, is not electrified in any way. Um, the only thing preventing people from going over the top of it is the, the barbed wire. But if a cable or something, or hit by lightning, were to strike the fence, what you want is that fence to, instead of allowing electricity to go through someone's body who might be touching it, will actually go into what we call the ground grid, uh, of the substation. The substation underneath that crushed stone is a lattice work of about half-inch, uh, copper cable that is laid out in basically a lattice under everything. Um, and then that lattice is connected to a, uh, basically a, uh, a copper cord, uh, rod that goes down in various sections of the substation, deep into the ground. Um, and then every piece of equipment, uh, on the substation is connected to that ground grid, including the fence. Um, I had the pleasure of, uh, giving a tour to, uh, some of the council, council members about a week and a half ago, uh, and showed them, you know, the connection points and things of that nature. The idea is that, uh, any kind of electrical short circuit, um, will go down this connection to the ground grid, into these spikes into the ground, as opposed to, you know, being a danger to anybody. This does not mean that someone, and this has happened, you've seen in the news, you know, coming in to steal cable, um, copper cable from various components, can't break open a, a component, and, and that's why we upgrade the security fence to the latest, uh, you know, that, that is required.
Okay.
So you can be stupid.
Right, okay, thank you.
You all set, Stephanie?
Yes.
Michelle?
Thanks, I had a few questions. So back to the transformer, the new transformer, the foundation's only 10 feet, 8 inches by 21, 6, but you said it was only going to be a 6 by 6 transformer, 8 feet high?
Yeah, there's a, there's a buffer zone around the transformer to bear the weight of the transformer.
Okay, and do you have a picture of that? What it's going to look like, the transformer?
I do not.
Does it look like any of them that's on the site now?
Uh, it looks like, um, I don't think we have one that you'd be able to see. There are two examples of it, the T1 and T2 transformers are basically about the same height and weight. Um, could you zoom in if you go back? That one there, if you zoom into this area, can we zoom into that?
If I, um, if I could, Mr. Chair, could I show him the pictures I have from the site visit, and he could show which one?
Yes.
Could you take this and, and just then you could tell, tell the board, um, I took a lot of pictures when we were there, so I don't know which is which. You can take that to the podium, and then the board members have all the same pictures. Just watch the step, there's a step there. Just trying to understand what, what, um, what that's going to look like, and also, while you're at it, so you're replacing, you're replacing a different one, you said? And how, is that comparable to what's there?
The new transformer?
The new, and then this replacement transformer?
Yes. They, they are size-wise identical.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that you got a good picture yet. It's this gray structure right here.
Okay.
This one will be a little bit shorter, um, and it won't be round, it will be square.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. My other question had to do with the drainage, so you, I heard the engineer say they're refurbishing the existing, but are they also adding new components? Or is it really a whole new system? The drainage system, stormwater management system?
It's all...
Well, the only, the only addition is the water quality basin, to meet some of the DEP guys.
This bio retention basin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's the only new concern, other than the extension of the swale itself, which was...
Okay, so you are refurbishing and adding that new component?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then my other question just had to do with this encroachment. So I thought you said that they were moving the equipment, the auto body shop, but then you said that they were leasing it, you were going to try to lease it, so is there, why would you lease it if they're...
They will be, they will be leasing it, but they cannot be, they cannot have those high Conex boxes next to the security fence where someone could jump over, so they have...
When they're going to move the car, you said they're going to move the cars and the box and the dumpster back, but then, so then what are they going to lease?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, they will be able to put lower, uh, they have a lot of, like, bumpers and things of that nature that are transitory, uh, for their business. Uh, that type of stuff can, uh, stay on the ground, uh, in that area. So it gives them essentially a storage area where they do a lot of outside storage of these, you know, basically auto parts that they're replacing. Uh, but they can't have a, a structure high enough for somebody to climb up on and then leap over the security fence.
Right. Okay, um, thank you. And then the, the last question, um, well, actually, maybe that was the last question, but I'm not sure if we can get some clarification, because I'm not understanding how we can allow you to use property, your property, for residential or motor vehicle repair shop or anything like that. Um, that's not accessory to your use, so I'm not sure how you could lease your property for those different uses, whether it's the doggy daycare, or the motor vehicle repair shop, or the residential uses. How are you, uh, do you, you don't have an occupancy permit for those things, do you?
Uh, my understanding is that National Grid Legal has, uh, basically vetted these, uh, encroachment agreements with these companies, uh, you know, through all the required, uh, regulations, um, that allow them to basically use the property, you know, for those situations.
But in terms of city zoning, I mean, we couldn't, like, I couldn't use a residential property and tell a restaurant, "You can use part of my property to store your residential, uh, your restaurant equipment on my property." So I think it's a, I'm asking a zoning issue, how do you, why do you think that that's allowed?
Well...
Under city zoning?
The, the encroachments are minor, uh, and in some circumstances, they're, they're de minimis. Um, over time, and in certain circumstances, over probably many, many years, uh, these have developed, um, some unbeknownst to the company. And so later in time, when it's discovered, uh, the parties come to an agreement to allow these de minimis uses, uh, on, on the property. Uh, I can't say whether or not for sure, I, I couldn't give a legal opinion as to whether or not each of these uses are pre-existing non-conforming, and that they may, they might be protected because they, their use might have predated zoning that would, that could prohibit them. Um, I, I just don't know. Uh, the city, if they wanted to, uh, they could determine, uh, that they want to, uh, provide some type of an enforcement action, uh, with respect to those uses, if they wanted to. But Grid has taken the position that they want to continue to be a good neighbor. It's a relatively tight site, uh, they're, they're surrounded by, uh, sort of an eclectic mix of property owners and tenants and operators, uh, that have had these uses, historic uses, for, uh, long periods of time, and they're trying to be the good cooperative neighbor.
Okay, thank you. My only question was, when you say tight site, is this almost three acres a site? What, what is, what do you mean when you say it's a tight site?
It's about, it's, it's over two, two acres.
So why is that, why would you call that a tight site?
Well, it's relative, but, I mean, the, the, the completed substation as it exists today is, is relatively large. The amount of area, uh, that's left, that's remaining to, that's, that's occupiable for Grid's purpose for this project is relatively small. They wish they had more land to be able to, um, utilize, but they, but they don't.
Right, no, I mean, because it seems like it's spaced out to me on the site when I was there, you weren't, you're not even, you weren't even using a whole section of it, you're not using the section in the floodplain. And then my final question is just, can you just, just, do you have a diagram, or can you explain the truck, the trucks that are going to move around the new control house and the, the driveway that you have planned? Because now there'll be truck access in there, what, what's the plan for that?
There's a, there's a current gate, um... Yeah, I, I went the other way.
Wait, that was the plan I was thinking, right?
Yes. Um, so again, the current substation, uh, when you come in through the driveway, there is a, um, access gate, uh, right about this location here, um, that allows, uh, National, National Grid, uh, bucket trucks, uh, and for maintenance and for repairs in the event of storms and things of that nature, to be able to enter, uh, and perform maintenance on those components and the lines. Um, this new section that we're, uh, proposing, uh, we, that is the minimum turn radius, um, as we move things around, that's where we situate the control house, so to have, um, full access around, uh, the, uh, control house. And you can also see a small emergency generator, uh, where the little, the bottom section kind of bows out a little bit, um, to allow access around that as well. Um, this, again, allows us for maintenance activities, uh, or for repairs in the event of, um, failures or, you know, storm activity, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Can I, just for, just for clarification, uh, Michelle, you had mentioned, I think, driveway. This graphical depiction is, is merely to show the radius, the turning radius, there's not going to be an actual driveway.
You'll go over the crushed stone.
Paved or otherwise, that's correct, right?
Part of it's already paved. You can see that in the pictures, right?
In the beginning, at the, at the access point, yes, but not around the control building. That is not going to be paved, there's not going to be a dirt path or anything like that. That's just a graphical depiction to show the radius. that, that's just a graphical depiction to show the radius.
And just for clarification, we use a 30-foot design vehicle, which is comparable to any of the end grid vehicles that they use.
You all set, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone have any other last questions for the petitioner? Do you guys have anything else you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Chair.
Just, just that, I guess we'd be curious to the extent that if folks want to weigh in on any of the fence types. Again, we, we, we were advised to come with options, so that's exactly what we, we did. We came with three different options for fence styles, but it's, as, as said forth in Michelle's memo, there are placeholders with respect to the style as well as the, the height, and again, these come in between six to eight feet in height. So before, before we sit down, I'm curious as to if anyone wants to weigh in on that.
I mean, I, I like option A, but I'm one of nine, so.
To, to be clear, when we say, we're really talking about the height, we're recommending the eight-foot version to give more screening to the neighbors at this point, and as far as the type, we feel that's a request to ask to the, to the neighbors which one they want, and we're able to give that in some select colors and the styles. So we just wanted to basically give you a view of the options we're going to hold out for them if you approve, you know, the overall fence itself, and we do recognize the eight-foot is higher than your required or maximum seven, so that would need to be resolved to go beyond that six-foot, because you can't go in between, you have to either go with the six or the eight.
Okay, I see what you're saying, but, but are you basically saying that this lock could have option A, this lock could have option B, this lock could have option C?
That is correct.
That's what you, okay.
And they could have different colors. We, we think it might behoove the neighborhood to maybe come to some common thoughts, but everybody might want, there, there are some limited colors, they're like tan, gray and white.
Well, my, my thoughts are, and people can weigh in if they want, is that it should be eight feet to provide the most screening between the residential neighbors and this utility use.
And we, we are recommending you approve that option.
I mean, that, that's just my thoughts, but, you know, I didn't know if anyone else has any other thoughts. I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm assuming they agree also. Okay, do you have anything else?
That, that's all we have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone that would like to speak in favor?
Yeah, Counselor Steve Winslow, 83 Jacob Street in Worsix, Counselor, specifically wanted to speak in favor, there's a condition in the staff proposal related to drainage. I've been leading up a team with City Engineer Yemlip and our Conservation Chair Isaac Slavitt to look at storm drainage. This particular area, Coleman Road, Eastern Avenue is one we, under our stormwater effort, we, we've done an investigation across the city of areas that are prone to flooding. We've pretty much 95% of those areas, we've gone in with cameras, cleaned them out and know whether there's problems or not. This area is one that we continue to have some uncertainty about. As you might see from some of the plans, there's actually a city easement that crosses, across the lower half of the property, southern property, which is really, I think, part of the Lindenbrook culverts. So, so I want to speak in support of the condition of working with the City Engineering Department on, you know, the connection of the storm drainage and that type of thing. I mean, I do think that overall, we as a city, as you can see the tremendous amount of more power we need, that, you know, going up 250% over the next few decades is a lot of power, so we need this type of upgrade to happen and, but I know also, I know that neighbors have a lot of concerns and input and I appreciate National Grid working on and will hear those, those concerns, but I did specifically want to speak in favor of the condition related to working with the City Engineering Department on the, the storm drainage issue here, that continues to be an issue both from the, the north on these properties as well as from the south, heading from Eastern Avenue, the drainage all seems to come into that easement, and there's even like an open pit there, so, so we need to work to make that safe and drain properly, and we're still working on that. Thank you, great.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Anyone else in favor? Michelle, anything to read in favor?
No.
Seeing and hearing none declared that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone in opposition? Name and address for the record and please sign the.
Yep. Good evening. Daniel Sano, reside at 30 Parkside Place in Malden, and I also represent CCHM Realty Trust, which has properties in Malden at 202, 204, 206, 208 Broadway. While we're not immediate abutters to this, this substation, we are right around the block and we do take very much pride in our neighborhood. We take pride in making sure the neighborhood stays in the same condition, the beautiful way that it always has been, and I know many people agree that Malden has been a city that has been, put a lot of money, a lot of effort towards the beautification of our city and making sure that it is a nice neighborhood and place to be. I feel like this, this junction we're at right now is that we are seeing something going in the opposite direction of that, you know, there are many issues that I see that this, this substation addition will have, and I'll just, with no particular order, we'll talk about the aesthetics part first. You know, National Grid seems to be very difficult to answer the questions about what kind of the items they're going to be installing onto this, onto this property. They're very much focused on the, the control house, not very much focused on the, the type of fencing, not much more focused on the, the actual transformers that we, that we built, we built, this was actually a, a learning, we learned today exactly what the size of the sub, the, uh, substation is going to look like and how big it's actually going to be, so for us, you know, and a lot of the people that live in this area, you know, we have to remember this is not a, a substation that's in a desolate area and that people don't see every day, this is in the backyards of people's homes, and I just feel like this day and age, we should be, you know, going in a direction where we're taking away from substations, dangerous substations in people's residencies in their backyards. Instead, National Grid is trying to add to these, to this eyesore and this supply in possibly a dangerous situation. You know, there are some things, you know, I'm by no means a, an engineer, but there are some things that National Grid cannot rule out, and there are things, something like adding more to the substation is going to decrease home values, property values, it's going to decrease, it's going to have an impact on, on the water flow, even though they have studies and things going through, there's no certainty to it, any of it. It's not going to be too late until it's built and we see the problems that exist afterward. And what are they going to do? Say, let's take it down? No, they're not going to say that, they're going to say, we have to live with it, we have to adapt to it. So we, we're looking at things that these, these residents that are, that are, that abutters, issues with water flow that are going to be certain. Vegetation, wildlife, the wildlife habitats, okay? They had never talked about here, this hearing at all, the impact on the greenery, the trees, the shrubbery, how it actually impacts the, the aesthetics of people's homes or even just the wildlife. You know, it just doesn't seem right that the city of Malden has always been very much an advocate for the beautification and the aesthetics and making this a beautiful town, and all of a sudden, here we have going to entertain the idea of ruining a neighborhood even further. I get that business has to get done and that we need to, you know, adapt to the ever-changing since, you know, issues with electricity in the area, but the question comes down to, should it happen in people's backyards? Is there an alternative to all this? You know, at the end of the day, we cannot forget about sort of the white elephant in the room, what neighborhood this is all in. This is in an area where there's low-income housing, there are people that, you know, they, they're often poorly represented in these matters, maybe don't fully understand, can't come to these kind of hearings, can't get the information that they need to know, but this is a construction project that's going to be impacting everyone in that neighborhood, not just the abutters, and the, the low-income housing and the, the projects are definitely one of them, and I feel like that at this point, this is a multi-billion dollar corporation that's for profit, coming into a neighborhood, again, further embellishing on their property, making it, instead of taking away from residence, these, these substations from residents, the residential areas, they're adding to it, and it's in an area that it will happen very quietly because the people that are in that area are poorly represented, maybe not so much informed of what's going on. So I feel that at the very least, we heard today from one of their, their representatives that the question was asked, exactly why wasn't that area maintained over all these years, and the answer was, well, it was out of sight, out of mind. Well, I guess that gives us an idea of the actual history of National Grid's thought process on these kind of projects, is that going to be the same thing in this scenario here? To what degree would they be held accountable when things don't go right? Is it going to be another, oh, we built it, we're going to be here for a year or so, see how things go, and then it'll be out of sight, out of mind once again. So very much opposed to this, I think it's going to be detrimental to the land and the value of the land and as well the well-being of the people in the area and not, not just the abutters, we're talking about the entire Maplewood area itself. Thank you.
Yes, sir, please make sure you sign the, the sign-in sheet, and if you could also, what was the correct spelling of your last name?
Say that again?
Correct spelling of your last name?
S A R N O.
S A R M O, and your residential address?
30 Parkside Place.
30 Parkside Place. Thank you.
Corey Stone, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Yes, I'm Amy Brown, I live at 29 Coleman Street. I've been there, we bought the house in 93, my husband's a veteran and we were able to use his certificate for it. Before, we lived on the opposite side in housing and lived there for three years, and before that, I lived at 154 Coleman Street, so I've been there over 35, 36 years in that part of Malden. I have been in Malden since 77, so it is definitely my city. What I liked about 29 Coleman Street was that it had all of the shrubbery and trees behind and it had like wood life, part of the, like, country in the city, and when I lived there, the woman before that I bought the house from had had the house built and the National Grid or electric company then had almost a 25-foot like bottle brush fence so that you couldn't see in any of the facility, but it was quite a distance away. The cul-de-sac or whatever you want to call it for where the water would drain, I never really, there was tons of phycidia, so you never really saw it, but to my knowledge, I've never seen anybody fill anything in, leaves and stuff could fall down, but in the past couple of years, we, we've tried to dig out so that the water will run through when it comes out, but now it comes out so much that it comes into my backyard, and when we first bought the house, we had water in our cellar. When I lived in housing, we had water in the cellar. We had water that was so bad one year that they had blow-up rafts going down the street. You could watch water come from Broadway all the way down, but as far as like, I've been told that they want to do the vegetation, they, the fence, I also have a garage that's right on the edge of my property line, and I know my perimeter is 80 by 80 by 80. I need to get to the back of my garage, but if they're going to put a fence where I can't, I mean, I think there's got to be some kind of laws or whatever that you are able to, you know, take care of your property. The same with like, if we have a fence and can't get to the back of where the water comes, to just dig it out, I mean, we're the ones that are going to be like a parent with a kid, you there 24/7, you see what's going on, they're not going to be there, they haven't been there all the time that we've been there. All of a sudden, now they came and took down a bunch of trees so that they could put their big, um, utility place there, shed or whatever you want to say, it hasn't been put yet, they have big cement things, it looks like they're going to put it on so that it won't get wet. That whole part of that area floods in the wintertime, you could make a skating rink. So one little thing behind my property isn't going to solve what goes on in the big field. Or on the other side, there's trees. We have the bike path that's open to the public, that could have access to walking in and out, but I've been told by a couple people that, oh, they're going to take the vegetation, they're going to take down all the trees, so now I'm going to look like looking at a prison or at a brick wall. I, the aesthetics also, health-wise, you're going to improve all this, what's it going to do? I raised five sons there, I have 10 grandchildren that come over. I'm going to tell my kids they can't play or have their kids play in the yard because it's dangerous in National Grid? Or, I'm being, I'm not professional and know everything, but I have read a little bit of the health effects, I also know over the years, how many people in that area have had thyroid cancer and all kinds of health issues, so sometimes, you know, somebody says, you really want to buy a house that's right next to the electric company? But I'm just saying, I have concerns, I know we need more energy and stuff like that, but is anybody looking or asking questions about how you go about it other than just tear, cut down the trees, we don't need them, and yet they want to beautify the city? We only have a few residents on that part, and the front part is all businesses, so I get, and then it's like housing, which is the federal government, is on the other side. Are you going to make it so that there's no trees and you look right at the National Grid, but housing will have trees to look at? I don't know. I'm just bringing up what my concerns, and I'm sorry if I'm really emotional, but I grew up in the country and I, I, I really cherish having greenery around me, not stone, steel and big buildings. I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Good evening all. Miss, did you sign the clipboard?
Yes, sir, I did, yep. My name's Daniel Myatt, I live at 23 Coleman Street, I'm also a business owner in the city, I'm also a member of the Board of Directors in the Chamber of Commerce in the city of Malden. My property is the most affected by this work that National Grid wants to do. When I bought the property quite a few years ago, I knew I was buying a property next to a substation, and I understood that, but I also understood that the land that was previously that they showed you wasn't going to be buildable or wasn't going to be built upon. In fact, I had full access to that land, and for many years, my neighbors can attest to that, I maintained that property, I moved the lawn, took care of the property, because as the gentleman said earlier, National Grid, when, when asked the question, how did the, the land become, or the swell or whatever it was called, become covered, I believe he stated that there was no, it was out of sight, out of mind. So for over 20, 30 years, National Grid has neglected that property, they've abandoned it, they've neglected it, they've had nothing to do with it. They run, they come in there and they, they, they want to come in and just start building these things, I, I implore all of you to come to my property, I invite you all over, I want you to see just how close they're building this structure. My swimming pool is literally right here, and they want to put the structure right here, not just the structure, but a transformer, and I have a swimming pool, I have children that play in the swimming pool, they squirt guns, they got, I could take my hose and I can hit the, the transformers with the hose if I wanted to, so who's to say the kids aren't going to do that, you know? So for many years, myself and my neighbors have picked up trash, we've picked up auto body parts, we've picked up all kinds of things off of that property, and. And what they don't show you in these pictures is they don't show you my house. Go through them. You won't see one picture of my house. They don't show you my house. Why don't they show you that? Because if you're if you're good people and you're practical folks, you will see that. If you lived there, you would feel the same way. You would feel the same way. Drive down Broadway where the broken yoke, Robert's Broken Yoke is, park your car, and look in there. They've cut down trees that are over a hundred years old, beautiful trees, as my neighbor Amy cited, beautiful trees, vegetation's been cut down. Since they've cut that, those trees down, vegetation, we can hear noises, we can hear the trucks, we can hear the vehicles. It it blocked out the noises, it it provided, provided us with some some peace and tranquility. We no longer have that. What we have now is we have trucks, National Grid trucks, beeping, backing up, idling all hours of the night, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, there's National Grid trucks, they're idling. The proposed is detrimental to the neighborhood, to the neighbors and the community. The noise that we that we have to listen to every day coming from those transformers, as Rich stated, I believe he stated, it's a it's a little bit louder than, the desk was a little louder than having a normal conversation. So that means I can't have a normal conversation because the transformers are humming in the background. And now they're going to move them even closer to the home, to our home, to our family's We didn't get any of this stuff that we have today. I had to ask Michelle for this stuff. National Grid never provided to us. We weren't aware of any of this. And they thought that they were going to jump us up by showing us these pretty pictures of fences. Well, here's here's the problem with that. They're going to put a fence that's about, I believe, twelve feet tall with the barbed wire. Okay, so you're going to have a twelve-foot barbed wire fence right here, and then you're going to have an eight-foot fence right here. We can still see the barbed wire fence, right? We can still see it. So if you're going to, if you want to make us happy, you got deep pockets, you guys can afford to do this, you did it with the shrub, which which I don't understand, you guys spent thousands of dollars putting arbovites in, which they're going to destroy and and take out. They put those in years ago when they did the fence over. They told us that there was going to be no more construction. We put up with the fence when they replaced the security fence. They like to throw around words like protection and security, but really, those are just just fillers. Those are just words that they throw around. You know, it's been out of sight, out of mind for twenty, thirty years. If they cared about security, they would have taken care of their property years ago. It doesn't make sense, it's not practical, to put a fence, a barbed wire fence this tall, and then have an eight-foot fence in front of it. If you guys want to make, if you if you want to satisfy us and make us happy and be good neighbors, then you need to build the fence higher so we can't see the chain link fence. We don't live in a prison. We live in the city of Malden. We have businesses here, we raise families here. None of these guys are from Malden, not one of them is from Malden. We're all from Malden. We need to protect our city. If this was, in Wellesley, this didn't happen in Wellesley. In Wellesley, they were forced to put privacy screening up that that covered the the barbed wire fence. So I implore each and every one of you to make the right decision for the Commonwealth of the people of the City of Malden, for us, for our neighbors. Come to my backyard. I'd love to show it to you, and I'd love you to see, for you to see just for yourself exactly what I have to look at every day, and since they've taken out the trees and the vegetation. And and we do appreciate that you are going to fix the flooding. I have nothing to do with this flooding. When I bought the house, obviously, the the pool was there, everything was there when I bought it, but the the flooding is also a major issue. And I feel that if this this building is allowed to go forward, and I understand that we need to en- en- improve the electricity. Rich, can I ask you, does the Maplewood Substation provide power to Malden? Because my understanding, it provided power to our neighbors of the north. Can someone from that, can we, Mr. Chairman, can someone from National Grid answer that question, if that substation?
Well, we can ask that after. If you could give your testimony, and then we we can ask. I believe they presented earlier that this Maplewood Substation supplied the electricity to Malden, but we'll confirm that.
Yeah, please confirm that, because I was under the impression that it denied, it provided power to the north. So that being said, the other concern we have is is when they build this this building, what type of lighting is there going to be? You know, is there going to be bright light shooting into our backyard? So we're concerned about the sound, we're concerned about the lighting, we're concerned about the fencing, and we just want you guys to help us out here. Just make it look nice for us, you know, give give us the tranquility and the peace of mind that that we deserve to have and live in our homes in peace and quiet without the disruptions. And not only that, we're going to have to deal with the construction, you know, trucks out there every day, you know, from, I believe, six, five or five AM to six PM, six days a week, Monday through Saturday. I believe that's what I I read in the permit, that they're they're intending to do this work. I appreciate them waiting until after the summer so we, my family and I can enjoy our pool and our backyard and barbecue. But we hope you guys will make the right decisions for my neighbors and my neighborhood, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Welton Duda, thirty Coleman Street. That's the first time I'm meeting the people from National Grid. I'm a homeowner, probably talk to my spouse, but never talked to me about it. I received two letters from them, what they're going to do. Nobody came to me, say, hey, we're going to do this, this, and that. My husband is a sixty-five-years-old man. He's a retired police officer, also a cancer survivor. He has melanoma. Okay, he goes to treatment every month. And as far as I know, and being a radiologist certified for the state of Massachusetts, I'd like this for the record, I know his desk can reflect, he is healthy. The noise, you know, the, we've been there with my neighbor so many nights, we have to go run in the rain, he has to come to my house, get my sun pump, because there's so much floating, because National Grid never taking care of the property. We clean up on the summer, we do a lot of stuff of that, check garbage, trashes. He plants so many trees, I help him to plant, so to contain the flooding. Where's National Grid in their houses? You guys, never been there, I assume? We're from Malden, like Daniel says. They're not. They don't know how much money we spend to fix over there. Many hours, like, two, three o'clock in the morning, putting pumpings, getting the water, you know, call neighbors, help each other. Are they there to help us? No. So, I don't know why this project has been in Malden. Honest, my, I, we're checking out our houses, building, making better, newer appearance to the houses, painting the houses. We spend money, ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year to fix the house for the, you know, to get a better value. When you're going to put this power plant, the value is going to go down. I'd probably sell my house or someplace else, because I don't want to live in front of, like, you know, a power, power plant station, you know? And it's very sad to say that, because, you know, Malden is a beautiful city. I lived in Malden for sixteen years, was the city that I chose when I moved from New Jersey. When I come from this country, I moved to New Jersey, and I choose Malden, because I read so much about cities in Massachusetts, and Malden drove my attention, because the simplicity, the character, the neighborhood. And I don't want to, like, you know, live in front of a power plant, which they don't take in care. Now they come in front of you guys to make fences shumancy, we're going to put a fence of this, we're going to do this. The noise is, is too much. The transformer makes so much noise, all of the same, you're watching TV, explosion, boom. I want the transformers to go away. Are they there to fix it? Them? No. Something happened to the, on the street, like, the lights, like, you know, we had to call, then you say, listen, if something break to my house, I'm going to sue you guys. Then they come to fix the lights. So, I would, I would like you guys to take a consideration, especially for my husband, who's a police officer, retired police officer, and he has a cancer. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, can you make sure you sign with your correct name and spelling, if you could print it? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else speaking? And Michelle, anything to read in opposition?
No.
Seeing in here, none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report, please, and recommendation?
So this is the planning report and recommendation dated September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. It's regarding Zero Broadway, that's also known as two thirty-five Broadway. I won't read it verbatim into the record, but it's incorporated here and by reference to the record of this hearing. One thing we did not, I-
Michelle, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Rennie. Can you come up to the microphone and tell us, who is this substation supplying electricity to the Malden?
This substation supplies power to all of Malden and several of the towns around it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Meyer, did you, you all said, thanks? I'm sorry, Michelle.
So we heard about the proposal. One thing that wasn't mentioned, and it was shown in their photos, it's also shown in my photos, there is a large construction dumpster that I was told is temporary, it was being used for site cleanup. So that's the blue dumpster that was shown in their picture, it's also in these pictures that I took. I won't read, I'm trying to just go through, giving you a description of the structures that are proposed, the location. We heard about, well, actually, I don't know if we heard, I think they mentioned the retaining wall. The blocks that are on site that you can see in the photos I took, those are actually the retaining wall blocks. That's going to go in the corner, northwestern corner of the site, you can see that on one of the plans as well. We heard about the new security fencing, eight feet in height with an additional one foot above, which is the barbed wire section. And we can talk about the fencing proposed for this screening fencing, stormwater management system. I've shown, given you a just listing here of all the plans that were filed, we have copies of everything, including the fence samples that they submitted. So the subject property is located in the industrial one zoning district. Utility, utility facilities, including electric substations, which require a structure above grade, may be allowed only by special permit in all zoning districts. That's in our zoning ordinance. The existing utilities, the existing utilities used in substation facilities, building and structures predate the current ordinance, may be considered pre-existing non-conforming use, building and structures. That this use may be extended by special permit. The Business Highway Zoning District abuts to the west and north, the Residence B Zoning District abuts to the east, direct abut is to the west, a motor vehicle repair shop restaurant. To the north, a mixed-use property with general offices, motor vehicle repair shop and residential dwelling, and two family dwellings. To the east are two family dwellings and four family dwellings. To the south, retail services, which is a doggy daycare and kennel, and the abandoned railroad right-of-way portion, which is used as the public multimodal recreational trail by To The Sea Northern Strand Community Trail. Surrounding land uses a residential, industrial business and institutional. The existing and proposed building and structures on the property comply with all dimensional controls, including yard setbacks. At least, that's my understanding, that fifteen feet is what we're using, that that's the highest structure on site. So that's how we're measuring the setbacks. Parking and loading, so the ordinance has some different provisions here for parking and loading for these facilities. Excuse me. One is that parking and loading spaces shall be provided where the board finds a need. Two is that loading shall not exceed the requirements of the loading regulations, which is one loading bay per establishment. And three is that parking shall not exceed the ratio of one point two parking spaces per employee. No loading or parking is depicted on the plans. There does appear to be adequate space for at least three parking spaces configured head-on that would not block the driveway access to the gates and fencing around the facilities. That's located in the paved area in the southwestern corner of the property. There's a picture, I believe it's the last picture in the package, that's showing this area that I'm talking about, with a few cars parked there. And then you can see the driveway that's running out to Broadway to the left on that picture. So that, there appears to be some parking on site. In terms of screening, non-residential uses abutting residential uses require screening by fencing or foliage, must be provided and maintained by owners of the non-residential property. The screening areas between the non-residential and residential uses shall be at least ten feet wide. So plans do depict a screening area. I have written that it's less than ten feet wide, because that was my understanding when I was looking at the plans. I, petitioner did contact me to say they thought that was not correct. The proposed screening that's shown on the plans is chain link fence with slats, six feet in height. But as you've heard tonight, and you do have these photo sims or these spec sheets in your packages, they've submitted these spec sheets and photos of several of the fencing. We heard that it could be six or eight feet in height. The encroachments are shown on the plans, as you can see on the plan, it's labeled encroachment areas. So it's along the entire northern property line and portions of the western, eastern, and southern boundaries. So this is where abutting properties encroach onto the property and use portions of the subject property for private use, residential business. I've listed five of them. There were two others as well that aren't listed, two seventy-three Broadway and twenty-nine Coleman. So there are residential uses, business uses, and industrial uses. I've listed here some outstanding questions and concerns that I would recommend be addressed before allowing the proposed expansion of this electric substation facility. One, are there potential safety issues with encroaching onto property used for an electric substation? Two, are there encroachments onto property, are encroachments onto property used for electric substation in the interest of the common good? Three, how might these encroachments affect the health and safety of the neighborhood? Four, how might the proposed expansion affect the existing encroachments? Five, how might public safety be affected by extending the substation facilities closer to the residential encroachments? Six, would the city incur a liability by issuing a special permit to expand the electric substation facilities, knowing of these existing encroachments onto the subject property? And seven, depending on the above, should the encroachments be allowed to remain or be required to be removed from the subject property? As this board's familiar, I'll just note, you know, when you issue a special permit, it runs with the property. So you are regulating use of that property with a special permit. In terms of stormwater management, I did submit the stormwater report and plans to the city engineer, and it's still under review. Did not receive any comments back. And these are the findings required to grant the special permit. Do you want me to go through them now?
Yes, please.
So any creation or increase in violation of the dimensional controls of parking requirements will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Traffic and traffic patterns generated by the proposed use would not adversely impact any of the surrounding streets or create a traffic or safety hazard. That the proposed use will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood, that the proposed use is not in conflict with the surrounding land uses, the proposed extension of the pre-existing non-conforming use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and that the utilities, facilities will not unduly impinge upon the character or the health and safety of the neighborhood. So those are the different criteria that we have in the ordinance for granting a special permit for this proposal. You would need to make those findings in order to grant a special permit. So this recommendation was prepared prior to the public hearing and is being made, provided that you can make those required findings. So to grant a special permit subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be asked for plans except as modified by these conditions. I will note on that, I'm not sure how that will stand if there are encroachments being shown on the plans, if that will bind this property to requiring those encroachments to continue or not. Had a brief discussion with the building commissioner about that. Typically, as you know, anything shown on the plan is enforceable to the property, because it will go, these plans will go with the special permit. Two, install and maintain fencing. I would recommend you specify the height, style, and type of fencing to screen abutting residential properties. Three, security fencing may be a maximum of nine feet in height, including one foot of barbed wire on top. Four, install stormwater management system on site, subject to- Four, install stormwater management system on site, subject to modification and approval of city engineer. Five, remove all encroaching uses and structures, install fencing along property lines to prohibit encroachments. And six, lighting, this is something I added during the discussion, lighting shall be directed away from abutting residential properties. I think we'll say all lighting. I'm not sure about the lighting on the existing structures or not. And in terms of two, in terms of the style and fencing, the style, I don't necessarily have a recommendation, but I tend to agree with some of the comments we've heard. I think if the point is to screen from the, what's there, it should be high enough to screen from what it's trying to screen you from. So if that's, I'm not sure, somebody mentioned a higher, higher fence that was there before. I'm not really sure how this would work, how high the fence can be. I know these styles can only go up to eight feet, but I don't know if there is another, you know, like you see, I'm not saying it's the same, but you see on the highways, those are really high fencing shields, or whatever they're called, sound barriers. So I guess there is some technology somewhere to make something higher than a type of vinyl fence. So suggesting maybe that's something you want to consider. I don't have any more information about it at this point, though.
And you said that the buildings are being deemed to be 15 feet high?
I believe that is the, this new control house is 13.8 feet, 13 feet, eight inches. And I believe it was on their plans showing...
And the fencing, nine feet?
Fifteen, right. Well, the, the security fencing is eight feet of chain link...
Right, plus the barbed wire.
With barbed wire makes nine. But that's not the screening fencing. We don't have requirements in the city zoning for security fencing, we have requirements for screening fencing. The security fencing is this particular petitioner's own requirement. We're not, we don't have security requirements.
Right, but my point is, if those are nine feet...
Right.
Then the screening fence needs to be at least nine feet.
I mean, if you're trying to screen from the fence, the security fence, yes. If you're trying to screen from the structures, it needs to be higher than that.
Okay. Okay, is that it, Michelle?
That is everything I have.
Eric McCush.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding the encroachments, could, could there be an option where rather than they remove the encroachments by going to their property line, they can give and/or sell the encroachments to the abutting property owners that are utilizing those encroachments?
I mean, I believe there would be, I mean, I believe there, you can, they could sell their property, they're not, you know...
Well, could we make that a requirement?
That, I'm, that I'm not sure. I don't know if we could require somebody to sell part of their property or transfer it. And I can't, I can't sit here and say that I think the leasing is a good idea either, because I think you're legalizing that. I think you're legalizing the encroachments, you know? If they offer to, to sell, that would be one way to get rid of them, I guess, or to, you know, deal with them would be to remove them by removing them from the property, right? Changing the property line. They have enough property boundary to change their boundaries.
Did the city solicitor offer any advice on that?
I did not ask. I've raised the issue several times since the petitioner, since the beginning earlier this year, so. I've raised it as an issue, I did not get a legal opinion. And I'm not giving you a legal opinion, I'm just saying I think there's an issue that should be addressed.
Okay, you all set, Eric?
I am, thank you.
Stephanie Stone.
Yeah, I was wondering, what is the zoning line? Is the, are the houses in a residential zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you were saying to that, so then the, the pet place and the auto body shops are in, in the industrial zone, yet still, the National Grid could not lease their property to, even in another industrial business, because it's not part of their use of the land?
They're, they're, they're actually in industrial, let me just pull up the zoning for a second. I believe what's on Broadway is actually highway business. So they're in industrial, the, the National Grid site. The properties along Broadway, the business properties are highway business. And then the properties over the residential are Residence B. So, no, I'm, I guess I'm not, I'm not saying you couldn't use industrial property for that business use, I'm saying there's no permit to do that. So, you know, it's not like that previous case where you had accessory uses that could be allowed. This is another principal use, a business, that's using part of their property. So that's what the question or concern I had was, from the zoning perspective.
Right. And is it, I mean, at least for the pet place, is it possible to ignore that part, because it's not part of this, part of the property that's affected?
Well, what's before you is the entire property. So if you issue a special permit, it will run with this whole property, this parcel, and, you know, will get recorded at the registry under this address.
Right.
So...
And with the, on a different topic, sorry, on the, it seems like it's possible, I don't know, that with the, the stormwater issue, that maybe trees have to be removed to try to address the drainage? But is it possible to try to make sure that if trees can be replanted, that they are, to the extent possible?
I mean, I think you could ask for that, I'm not sure where, or, you know, usually you want to be a little, you want to be as specific as you can, how many trees, the location, et cetera, where you would want that. I'm not sure it could be in that area. And I'm not sure if the trees we heard being removed are in that drainage area, because I think when you look at the plan, I think the drainage area is a little, is further south, whereas the trees that are being removed, I believe, are in this encroachment area here, because I think it was 2029 Coleman, which is, which is this house here. So I'm not sure exactly where the trees were removed from.
Right.
But if you wanted to require replanting, I would say you should ask them for a plan showing where it's going to go.
Yeah, it seems like, I guess in general, that there's a lack of specificity, we're not seeing visuals of things like we do in a lot of other presentations.
Yeah, you do have some pictures, and I just want to know if you did look at the pictures. I took pictures of all the encroaching properties, it's not really easy to understand, I know they're just black and white pictures, but you do see these neighbors that, you know, are encroaching, you see all the other residential neighbors that are encroaching. I took pictures of the building that encroaches, the compressor that encroaches.
I, yeah, I get, I was...
You have some sense of that, right?
I was referring to their plans for what it would actually look like, the property.
Oh, I see.
Looking like with the dual fences, and it's, it was so hard to tell from that little tiny picture with little lines that I couldn't see. So I would like to see something else that's actually what it would look like or could look like.
So a plan that would, more like a graphic showing that?
Are you all set, Stephanie?
Yep.
Diane, you?
I'm looking at the outstanding questions and concerns, and those are all my concerns that I'm, that I have too, because you do want to know about the safety of the neighborhood adding another substation to something that's already there. I know it's supposed to be lower decibel, but is there any impact on their health? We, nobody knows that. Did the National Grid ever meet with the neighbors? Was there a neighborhood meeting and everybody got together? Okay, so we did have one?
No.
No, that's okay, I'm just, if you nod, you're saying yes, okay. So these questions could have been asked, so I'm assuming they, I'm more hoping that they had been. But I do agree with the fact that eight feet is not going to be enough to cover up 11 and a half foot fence. And I do think taking down the trees, I liked Stephanie's point where it says you can replant trees maybe, if they could do that too.
I just, I'd like to just clarify the height of the fences. No, please, if you could have a seat down, if we need to, we can ask afterwards, but you've made your presentation, you've had your chance to talk, the neighbors have had their chance to talk, now we're trying to discuss it, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, so that's...
Diane, if you could not ask open-minded questions that invite people to think they should come up and speak, that'd be great.
I will do that, thank you. No, I was just, really just my concerns, and I'm just thinking, based on what the concerns are, what we've heard, there's still a lot of open-ended questions that we have. So I'm like, I'm trying to make a decision here, and it's just kind of difficult at this time, unless I...
Okay, another point noted, let's, I have Risa and Eric McCush. Risa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to understand from the submissions to if there are, if there is additional greenery or trees that are being removed. I can't tell if that's also happening, and if there are...
I'm sorry, Risa, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, I can't tell from what's submitted if there are, if there are additional trees or greenery that's, that are being removed to make room for the, for the new build.
It sounds like it already was done.
Okay, I don't know if there's any more, but...
Okay.
It's not clear to me.
Okay, and anything else?
And I'd like to also address that, if there are...
Anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Eric McCush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, there was 15 feet between the privacy fence and the security fence, right?
No.
That's a question I was asking Eric.
Okay.
How much is between the two of them?
No, I think it, I'm sorry, and I didn't know that, I think it varies. When you look at this plan, and I, I left my full-size copy upstairs, so the 15-foot is where the security fence is, then there's this area where in some cases, it's closer, in some cases, you can see here, it's saying 11.94, so it, I, I believe it varies. The screening fence is in that area. So it's not at the 15, the screening fence isn't the security fence is, is how I understand it, looking at these plans. And there are some notes too, on where trees are being removed and where things are being removed, but I, again, I don't know if that's already happened, or if that's what's proposed. And like I said, I took a lot of pictures, so I'm not really sure what's still there.
If there's, so roughly 10, you could go with 10 feet between the two fences, so looking at, it's, you'd have to be really, really far away to see the barbed wire over the, the nine-foot barbed wire fence over the eight-foot privacy fence. Like, if you're standing next to it, you won't, you'll always, all you'll see is the privacy fence, you won't see the barbed wire, unless you're really far, or from a higher angle.
Right. Yeah, no, no, that's a good point, and I, and I believe when I looked at it, it looked like this area was lower than most of Coleman and some of the properties to the north.
Okay.
But, are you all set, Eric?
I am, thank you.
What I'd like to suggest, Eric Henry. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, again, Mr. Chair. I, I understand and appreciate the debate about, about the fence and the height of the fencing, I, and definitely from the visual aspects, but I also think that the, the issue of sound abatement with the height of the fence is, is also as critical, if not more, more so with the height of the fence. So maybe a higher fence would be able to, to dampen or abate noise, pollution in, in that area as we go forward. Yeah, if, if, if mature trees were taken down, it would, you know, it would be a bonus if we would be able to clearly articulate how many, if they were, they were being replaced or some plan like that, or something like that. But last but not least, it's, again, this is one more plan that is before us, it's a major of concern, and particularly in that area of our city. As I learned in working with the Maldon Rivershead folks, water has memory. And ours area, that is well documented, that that area of the city is a particular of concern of, of water and its ability to remember, remember where it is, where it's been. And to once again have a plan come before us that doesn't have the, as I read it here, proposal on the, proposal for the stormwater management, I'm, I'm really beginning to question the definition of stormwater management here sometimes, as opposed to, but the proposals under review for the city engineer, why are we not seeing this delineated in front of us? Am I missing, am I, I see words in there that says that they're planned, and then I see that it's, it's not...
What we can do is submit this stuff to the engineering department and request a response before the hearing. If we don't get the response, then we see, subject to modification and approval by the city engineer, because we didn't get a response. We asked for it, we didn't get it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not a good answer, but that's the reason. And, and if we don't get it in time, the other option is wait until we get all this information before we schedule the hearing. That's the other option.
Yeah, it...
But I, I understand your frustration, I'm, I'm not diminishing it at all. But, but I, I've actually added that to a list, so if you guys want to give me a moment and see if this helps satisfy what you're asking for, Eric?
No, you can take two.
That's good, I might need to. There's a lot of open questions here. Neighbors have weighed in, and they're concerned. National Grid has a lot of unanswered questions that, with regard to this. Unfortunately, when you start adopting things like green energy and clear, this is one of the byproducts, that you have to replace copper housing units with fiber optics. And if, that's the only way we're going to get there is by doing this type of thing. So that, that's one of the realities we have to face, and this is being mandated by ISO New England, as we saw in the presentation. So I don't think we're going to be able to outrun this if we're going to comply with the clean energy laws that Massachusetts has adopted. That said, I think there's more that we can do for the neighbors to help them than, than is being done right now. I, I can't make the motion, but I would propose we table this hearing, we get answers to the seven questions that Michelle has identified, we get answers to what trees and shrubbery was removed to make room for this new facility, we get a plan on what trees and shrubbery can be replaced, that they did remove, if you, if it can be replaced someplace else, we get the data from the city engineer on the stormwater plan, and actually get the feedback that we need to be able to make a decision on the stormwater and drainage and flooding, and the different areas proposed there. And finally, get better proposed options for blocking the view and the noise from the facility, so that we, is the right, is the right number eight feet, given the topography that if you put an eight-foot fence up and the rest of the lot is lower than that, you won't see summer stuff. You're going to see those, those transformers, those big wires down there, I don't know how you're going to cover that up. But there, I think there's things we can do for the neighbors to put a, a more fortified fence around, a higher fence around, that is high enough that if, if you're standing on one of the Coleman Street properties, if you're looking, you don't see the roof or the, or the new, the new housing unit that they're putting it there, in the control house, the control station, you don't see some of the other items that some of the neighbors have complained about. You don't see some of the other items that some of the neighbors have complained about. So, tho- those are six things that I would add, or five things I would add. The outstanding questions, and part of the outstanding questions are, involve the safety issues. They involve, would the city incur any liability? And, and what to do about the encroachments? We should get a legal opinion on how this, how this may taint the occupancy permit that, that currently exists now. Just by letting them do that and letting them enter into leases, does that taint their occupancy permit because they're doing uses surrounding on their property that they're not permitted to do? So, I think we need ans- I, I think I need answers to all those questions, and if others have, I think I tried to capture what other people were saying. Risa, did I get all yours? Okay, but I thought I tried to capture people's thoughts. I'll let Risa speak in a moment and then go back to Eric. But before we can make a decision on this, I, I think we have, need a lot more information. But Risa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For point five, with the fence height, it would help me to see a sightline drawing with the, the two fences shown from the residential point of view.
So, that information to include a sightline graphic?
A drawing section, yeah, something that shows how high the fence needs to be to block what we want to block.
Okay, and Eric Henry, did I incorporate the sentence?
Yeah, I think you encapsulated my, my thoughts pretty well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that had a comment that they wanted to make? Or something that they wanted to see? That, that wasn't captured here?
We addressed it yet, perhaps the lighting situation, if the lighting would change if it would go into the residential yards?
Michelle included that as a recommendation.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't know if there's a question about that. They're just going to have to do it. They're going to have to point it back towards their lot.
Right.
Not into the residences. But I don't know that the, Michelle, is there outstanding questions about that?
I mean, I think what they, I don't think there's an outstanding question, but I know that there is a plan that sometimes we see that shows the light shed. You know, it's a graphic, so it'll show the footprint of the building, where the light's going and-
Do you think we need that?
I mean, I don't, I-
Do we need to have them develop a plan and show, and show us a, a plan that says, put, shine the lights back on to their own lot?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could address it, yeah, yeah.
Add that to the list then.
Does anybody know what that's actually called, that light shedding plan, you know?
It's different from shadowing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Shadowing is when you get the sun across it, but-
So, just, we'll say a plan showing lighting fixtures and-
Illumination.
Yeah. You know, like it would show how far it goes out, yeah, I don't know what it's called.
I know what you're asking for, I don't know if there's an actual name for it. Okay, does anyone else have anything? Stephanie, did you have any more?
I'm good.
If no one else has anything, is there a motion? I am, as chair, I'm unable to make a motion.
Do you want me to read them, or does everybody know what those were?
I don't know. Why don't you read them, Michelle?
Okay, okay. I had answers to the seven questions, including legal opinion about the encroachments and liability. I don't, not sure, I'll be honest with you, about the answers to the other questions, where we're going to get them. In that, I would ask you to, or you're asking the petitioner to provide the answers to the- I'm sorry, answers to the, so the petitioner, these are things you're asking the petitioner, I'm sorry.
Our legal department.
And then I'll ask our, I'll ask our legal department and they'll provide answers as well, okay? Two, plan, I had plan showing, I wrote landscaping showing where shrubbery and trees are, were removed or are removed, will be removed, removal. And then I also had a plan showing landscaping, showing replanting, where shrubbery and trees would be replanted.
Replacing trees and any shrubbery wherever possible, right?
Replacing, replanting wherever possible, okay? Then I had storm, review of the stormwater management plan and comments and recommendations by the city engineer.
We need input from the city engineer. So, they've already submitted a plan, we now need the city engineer to-
Right.
-provide us feedback.
Right, and I had, like I said, I did ask and I did do a reminder, so, okay. Then I had, for four was to do with the, so those were the first, those were the first four. Stormwater was four. Five had to do with the fencing. And I had plan showing fencing height, you wanted a higher fencing, and then also include sightline drawings from residential, showing view from residential properties.
Right, because it sounds like eight foot might not be enough.
Okay. So, that's the two-part fencing, higher fencing options and sightline drawing, showing fencing. And then six, and that should include both the fences, well, the screening fence at least. So, you would be able to see what you can see behind it, right? And then, so it could be like a photo sim type thing, right? Showing the fence and then you see what's behind it, right?
And, and then having the, the metrics on it, that this is a thirteen-foot fence or fourteen-foot fence, and that that will cover whatever.
Okay.
If you do a, a ten-foot fence, you will see the very top of the, the house, the new housing unit, but that will be thirty feet away.
Okay, so I'll, I'll say five is fencing. It will say higher options, sightline drawing, and I'll put slash photo simulation, because I think they use those as well, showing view from residential properties and for a variety of heights, is what you want to say. Do you want to specify, you said ten feet, or just any heights?
I'm just saying, at a minimum, that blocks it, but if they want to show some scenario analysis, some sensitivity analysis about what the different heights might provide, and see if the neighbors, I mean, they should be talking with the neighbors about this stuff too.
Okay, variety of-
Especially the fencing.
Variety of different fence options, higher, okay. And then I, the, the six was the plan showing lighting, and I just put scope of illumination, I don't-
Yep, that's fine.
I don't really know what it's called. So, those were six. What is it? Is that photometrics? Is that what it is? Okay, I'll put that in parentheses, photometrics.
I think, we've seen them on the insides of buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and you see how it goes, okay. But we're talking about exterior lighting, okay? So, those were the six that I had.
Okay, did anyone, was anything missed in what people were expecting to hear? If not, is there a motion? Diane Chuha?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this, under the condition that the petitioner answers the six questions that we noted above. Is that what we want to do?
Well, the six, the six items that we're done-
The six items that we listed.
Not to be confused by the seven outstanding questions.
Correct. So, that, so, to table, to allow the petitioner to address the six?
The six additional questions, but not forgetting the first seven that were-
Okay, yeah, one of the six is the seven, right? Okay, so to, to table, and you're going to table the whole public hearing?
Correct.
Not just your decision, so that you'll open the public hearing again to take comment in on what new information?
Correct.
Okay, you'll receive the new information and then take public comment, okay?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Michelle.
So, these, it's the six, so the yes vote is to table, to allow the petitioner to address the six, I'll say outstanding.
The additional six.
Yeah, the six. The six requests.
Yes.
Because that's the board's request. Okay. So, Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Tuwadage Gubrisalasi?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Ronnie Rosebromer?
Yes.
Chuck O'Alvin?
Yes. So, what's happened is we've tabled it to a future hearing, and we, we got those six, I, six questions that we want answered. Some of it involves city resources that are going to weigh in, such as the engineer, engineering department's going to weigh in on the stormwater and, and drainage and that type of thing. City Solicitor's going to give us an opinion based on the legality and enforcement and potential risk of these encroachment agreements that, that National Grid's talking about. And the rest of them would be National Grid sharpening the pencil and trying to come up with a more specific idea of what some of these items are, what the safety issues are, and, and lay it out for us and submit it. I, I would highly recommend another neighborhood meeting, especially around the fencing and the, and the trees and shrubbery, because it sounds like either people weren't invited, or didn't know about it, or didn't attend. And I think a lot of this could have been resolved before coming here and having such a, a conflict between the neighborhood and the petitioner. No, you, you don't agree? Were all these people at the, well, the, we've actually finished, so no. You're, you're not able to, the hearing's closed and the vote's been taken. No, you can respond in writing based on the, the questions that you're going to be addressing.
Yeah, and I will send a, send this written summary to the petitioner. And so, it's basically the city, the petitioner and the city need to address, because as you said, some I'm going to get answers to and some they need to provide answers to. So, I will put, put that in writing. And that way, we will all have it.
Okay, thank you all very much. Thanks for hanging in there till the end.
And so, when we reschedule, when we schedule the public hearing to reopen, we will give notice to the abuders, we will post, there will not be a requirement to publish the notice.
Okay, next order of business. Eric, do you have an update for the Community Preservation Commission?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. We are meeting, I think, next Wednesday. Normally, regular scheduled meeting, we do have about five or six petitions in the hopper there. We also had our-
Okay, Eric, thank you.
We also had, I think, I don't know if, elections last, one of the last meeting, and Rachel Rollins is co-chair, I am also co-chair, and Lisa Solder is vice-chair now. So, that pretty much is, and we do, oh, we do have two brand-new members too. We, the planning board is, I mean, correction, CPC is, is a full committee, nine members. That kind of hasn't been that way in a while.
Very good.
Definitely worth mentioning.
Thank you. Anything else? Any questions for Eric? No? Okay, the next thing is, Michelle's going to speak briefly about the MBTA community zoning presentation she made last night.
I was there for the presentation. The consultants ended up making most of it. I answered some questions, but you have a copy of that, dated September 12th. I wanted to make sure you have the most current information. This was a presentation to the city council last night. We have been put on a sort of faster track than the track we were already on. We already have the December 31st deadline for compliance to establish to the state that our zoning complies with this law, this new law. But we were recently advised that they've updated the guidelines, so now mixed use can be allowed in certain properties. But there's a new requirement, with the new requirement, that says we have to get an approval, a pre-approval ninety days in advance. So, that pushes us ninety days prior to December, which moves us into September. So, we, we're on a real fast track. So, to get a draft proposal into the state for the mixed use, and also, it's recommended, we just show them everything we've done so far. So, that's what you have a copy of right there. Once we get the comments back from the state, which we're going to need like within a week or two in order to file a zoning amendment paper with the council, that will then come to you for joint public hearing. So, that's going to probably be scheduled for November. That's going to be a big one. We may ask you to do it on a city council night, to ensure the whole city council can be there as well. That will be the actual zoning amendment that we can see about passing to comply with this law to meet this filing deadline. But that's where it stands. You can take a look at it. If you have any questions, you can call me.
Okay, you don't have any other questions, no? Okay, and then the last item, well, the last item is we have a special meeting scheduled for September 27th, which is two weeks from tonight, and our regular meeting a month from now on October 11th. Michelle, do you have any comments about the special meeting?
The special meeting, I thank you all for accommodating that and keeping it on your calendar. At this point, we do have one subdivision plan that's come in that we're going to do, that we're under a timeframe. We only have so many days to do it and we can't wait until October. I originally thought some zoning amendments were going to be coming back. I, they could still come back, but I don't know that yet, unfortunately. I don't have any updates. Neither one of those needs advertising, so that's why we're able to still schedule it. If something changes, I'll let you know, but at the very least, we're going to do this subdivision, this preliminary subdivision. And then at our October 11th meeting, we'll have to see what, what we have. It's going to be a pretty full agenda now. We have a couple of things tabled. I think Highland Ave is, is filed what it needs to, to come back. I'm not sure about what, the one from tonight, and then there are some, a couple of new cases as well. So, we'll see, we'll do as much as we can. Okay, so we already have one down, October 11th, so, uh-oh. Tuwadage, you're out too?
Yes.
Okay, so two down, so that means we need everybody, including Ken.
Right.
So, we'll have to make sure. Is everyone else a yes?
Yeah, no.
Oh, boy.
Not for the 11th, but for the 28th?
The 27th.
27th, yeah, I'm on grant.
So, the 27th, you're a no. The truth is, both of the, both things that we might hear in the 27th, we're okay, we'll be okay with those. We don't, we don't need, you know, it's not like 10 eight, you needed eight of the nine to grant it, so those will be recommendations.
Okay, so you got with you knee?
Yes, I do, and I know Eric, I'm going to actually write that down before we get it. Eric McCush is out on the 11th.
Tuwadage is out the 11th?
And Tuwadage is out the 11th.
And Eric Henry is out the 27th.
Potential. Maybe he might be in here smoking a cigar because he's a grandfather. Okay, thank you.